Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the August fourteenth Planning Board meeting, our only meeting during the month of August. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This being the summertime, our Chair is away on a brief vacation and everything is fine with him, so I am again filling in, but hopefully we'll be back to full strength in September. We have one item under correspondence, I believe, two items actually, one relating to Staples Plaza and a very, very small relocation and amendment on a trash enclosure. There are four trash enclosure spaces and it's just a question of how those are being shared. There doesn't seem to be anything we need to do on that. And the other item of correspondence-
On that one, Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Do you request that we issue a memo to the file and to-
Okay.
-interdepartmentally so they have that in their records as well?
Then we can do that.
Those locations will be part of the approved record.
Okay. I misspoke, sorry. The other item of correspondence we have is from New York City Department of Environmental Protection relating to the Gardena Hotel Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. They commenced their review of the SWIP and they will be reporting back in September on how that's going to go. Any other comments on correspondence from anyone?
None.
Turning our attention to the minutes. Have you had a chance to review the minutes of the July meeting?
Yes.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have two items on the agenda tonight for decision statements. One is the Mucci Residence, also known as Brookside Village Subdivision Lot One. And we have received some memos on that from some of the town agencies. We have one from the Conservation Board, which is recommending a mix of landscaping. I believe you can step up. We have a recommendation that the conservation easement be delineated in the field so that it's known. We have one from Abaca stating they have no objections.
We just got a memo from the engineer today.
Okay.
Should be a late-breaking package.
Yes. Let's see that.
You got it? Yes, we have it. Thank you.
All right, he's raising an issue with the functionality of a swale and some drainage issues and also a sewer lateral. Do you want to address that? Is there anything we need to discuss on that?
Sure. Jim Anacarico with Cronin Engineering. So the first comment is, you know, just to, I guess, cover everybody that the swale must be functional all the way through to the existing stormwater basin. That, you know, that swell crosses a few neighboring properties. Says if the applicant cannot divert the runoff from the developed portion of the rear of the lot, because we are proposing cul-de-sacs in the front of the house, that additional infiltrators will be required. So we don't have a problem with that at all. The second item is we show the sewer service, sewer lateral connection to the manhole. There was no indication of an existing sewer lateral when they put in the sewer infrastructure for the subdivision. Wasn't picked up by the surveyor, nothing visible. So we'll try to obtain the ASBIL for the sewer system, see if there's a service shown on there. And either way, you know, we'll do some probing and try to find out if there is one. And if there is one, we'll connect to that.
John, are you aware of the status of that?
Of the lateral?
Yeah.
I am not.
Okay. So we'll have to make sure that that gets included.
Do you know if this, the swale is in an easement? Are you going to, are you expecting to be precluded from going onto neighbors' property to-
I believe it is in an easement.
Okay. In the favor of the town or in favor of the property owners?
Yeah, that I'm not too sure of. I don't know if that infrastructure was part of the town infrastructure, although I do know that the drainage from the road actually goes to it, so maybe it is.
I believe it's in favor of the town.
Okay.
So you shouldn't have-
Yeah. If that's the case, we shouldn't have a problem.
Right, okay. And do you have any comments on the Conservation Board's recommendations at this point?
No.
You accept them?
We accept them.
Okay.
We went over the draft resolution that was provided. No issues with anything in that.
Any comments from you, John, on this?
I have no comments other than making the engineer's requirements part of the resolution as conditions.
Okay. Counselor, any comments for us?
No, Mr. Trump.
There is one issue that's, again, not necessarily germane or particular to your application, but has to do with the generic language that we put in our resolutions when we come to decisions approving them. And perhaps, John, you can set the stage for the issue that we're going to address at this time.
The issue relates to approved site plans, whether residential or commercial, being completed to a satisfactory degree prior to the request and issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This will allow the town and the applicant to be certain that their site is completed in a appropriate amount of time prior to the end of the project so that there is not a scramble on the part of the town and a part of the applicant to get these things done, to do cash bonds and things of that nature. We'll put everybody on notice that if you're coming due and you're looking to use the building, that you need to have your site plan done. Have to turn your attention to those items. Is that appropriate?
Thank you. And I think the language that we're looking for is something along the lines as an additional clause in our approving resolutions that upon completion of construction, or at least ten days prior to the application for a certificate of occupancy, that the applicant shall certify in writing to the Planning Board that all conditions and requirements of the approving resolutions shall be, have been complied with and that the construction is complete, the site improvements and the conditions have been complied with here. And I'm suggesting to the board that we include language like this as a, in all-
In all our resolutions.
-appropriate resolution, you know, approvals that we do to make sure that we keep an eye on these things.
The only comment I would add is that if there was an agreed-upon variance from our approved plans, for good reason, that our, the language should say certification of the approved, our approved resolution and drawings-
Or as modified.
Or as modified to the acceptance of the Planning Board. Because things change in the field and-
I understand.
-it's happened, so we shouldn't have the wording be inflexible to that happening.
That's a good point. I think that's reasonable and I think that we should do that.
And what are we exactly trying to address? That a CO would be provided only upon-
To an applicant who has not, who, the town is providing the CO? The issue has come up in the past where certificates of occupancy have been issued and full site improvements, as we have set forth in our approvals, have not been completed.
And yet somebody is providing them a CO. So are we putting the onus in the right location? I mean, if the town is issuing the CO, shouldn't the town have some responsibility of making sure that it's been certified to the site plan? Suddenly the applicant has to take ownership of something that they were told was okay? Particularly if it's a change in the field.
Well, those changes should get documented. In other words, if you're changing grade or finished floor level of a building for a good reason, that's a good reason. And usually that gets memorialized in an approval by somebody who's inspecting it or the town engineer or the town building inspector, whoever causes that change to happen and signs off on it, that's a departure from what we have done here at this table.
And who has the responsibility of reporting that?
Well, that's what we're saying, that this is going to create an event that they have to come back to us to seek our final approval. And then we will then review any of those changes that got made. Because right now, we don't, we're not a party to any of those changes that may get made.
There was in the past staffing levels that allowed inspectors to go to most, if not all, of the sites so that, and the focus was on site work. Other inspectors have their business mind on structures, so, but that's, we don't, no longer have that staffing, so we run into these problems, not only for that reason, but various reasons. And this is a measure to try to prevent those crunch times so that an applicant has an advanced knowledge, that they have to have a, you know, a satisfactory response to that condition rather than it being overlooked when they're moving towards CO. And I'm not saying that it's the applicant's responsibility or fault for missing those things all of the time, but it has happened and, you know, probably in large measure because we do not have inspectors that are out there watching the sites being constructed.
Seems like an environment that's ripe for finger pointing.
Possible, but I think it can be nothing more simple, it doesn't have to be any more complex than a one paragraph, no back to us, you know.
If you get to the point in a, in a project where the applicant is anticipating a certificate of occupancy and they're being told they're going to be, it's going to be given to them by a town official, or not official, but a town entity, isn't the town the one that should be overseeing these things and making sure they're compliant? I mean, you're asking the applicant to self-certify here and at the same time putting a burden on them at a time in the project when they think they're done? It just seems to me that we're maybe pointing the responsibility or the task to the wrong party. And if it's a staffing issue-
No, I understand that. I think, I think this requirement will serve to help them understand that they're not done until the site is constructed properly. And in order to have it certified, there has to be, you know, a level of professional integrity in order for that to happen. And I think that will bring things up earlier on in the process without anybody's promises mattering other than showing and certifying that in their belief that they've completed the site according to the approval. So I see it as kind of a trigger, not necessarily a certification that doesn't need to be checked. It's certainly a trigger so that there's a discussion. It may trigger an earlier inspection than at the time that, you know, it's ready to be handed out. So I think it has utility in that regard.
What's the remedy or the punishment, for that matter? If somebody says, "Yeah, we're all done" and it's as, as it was designed, and in the end it's not? Because who's going to go back and check that? The town? The town engineer or the town building department?
Well, I think that when it is, when the certification letter comes, if it's a certification, whatever, whatever method it is, my department will certainly go out there. We do our best to go out and do a site visit to all sites, in particular, commercial sites that are being constructed. It's a matter of getting it at the right time often. But also, if it's, if the CO is given and the site is not completed, there would be a condition of the resolution that was not met properly and you could begin enforcement proceedings.
Could I, could I bring up a specific scenario in my client's case? You know, we're going into the fall here soon. They've obviously going to have to have grass planted and trees planted as part of their approval. If we get into the, you know, late into the season where they're unable to do that and complete that portion of the site plan, you know, how would that shake out?
Typically, that gets bonded. I mean, that happens all the time, so you bond the unimproved portion of your-
Just want to make sure there's a, there's a means for that.
So that's the cure for it, is that you can't do it because of the season and frozen ground, you can't plant grass seed and it won't grow. So you bond that in the spring you will take care of that, and if you don't, the bond will be pulled and the town will do it. So there's a cure for that.
It isn't out.
Right. My point is, I guess, my clients are under a pretty strict timeline to get their CO for this property. Otherwise, they take ownership of the road, is what they've been told. It's part of their contract. So I guess I'm thinking of a scenario where everything else is done as part of the site plan approval, you know, the water infrastructure, the sewer, the drainage, driveway's done, the house is done, and really the plantings are the last thing. I don't, I would hate to see that there's a possibility that they wouldn't be able to get their CO with all that done. But like you said, if we can bond it, then yes, it's fine.
Yeah, I mean, this is not, I don't think this is suggested as a casual thing about small details or something, but if there's a substantial departure from what we've approved and nobody has put a blessing on that in any documented form, that the applicant is on notice from the beginning, not at the end of the game, but at the beginning of the game, that you have to look out for any departures from your approval to talk to your contractor. Contractors change things that you may or may not know about, so I'm not saying that you're guilty of anything, or we're not suggesting that, but the end process sometimes departs from what we approve. And the applicant is who's before us and that's who the approval is given to, that person or entity has to be responsible for the end result.
Right.
So if you then have to go back to a contractor or something like that to demonstrate why that happened, and maybe that contractor had a conversation with the town engineer and agreed to something. And then the town engineer can confirm or deny it and then issue the CO or not.
Understood. I just want to make sure that landscaping wouldn't, you know, cause a-
We routinely deal with, your situation that you raised, we routinely deal with field changes that have to happen because of unforeseen circumstances, and they're not designed to hold up things, but just to make sure that we're all aware of what's going on. Same with, same with this one, okay? It's not, it's not designed to put an obstacle, it's just to say, "All right, we're at the point where we're done. Make sure, we make sure everything's done, we check it out or, and we move forward." John, isn't there a distinction now between enforcement, pre-CO, during construction and afterwards that you might want to discuss with us?
There is, the Planning Board has authority to enforce the work being properly executed and completed during and up until the completion of the project. Certainly after, I think that they also may have that afterwards, but certainly afterwards, it's in our legislation that the town, through various departments, can enforce all aspects of the site plan after the fact. So landscaping, any other hard structures can be enforced by departments within the town after CO.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
No.
And you just, you want to add that clause in?
Yeah.
All right, so with that additional language, is there a motion to approve this application?
This is going to be an all-
Going forward.
All, going forward.
Yeah.
Okay. As a matter of routine. I'll make a motion.
On the approval of that one, then we'll take that second one.
Right.
Second on the approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
On making this, you got the approval.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You want to make this standing resolution or do you want to do it on a case-by-case basis, just like we did? Rob, what's your concern?
I think we're putting the burden at the wrong part of the workflow, at the, on the wrong people. They're being, they're being advised and approved by town parties, whether it's the Planning Board or the Building Department or the Town Engineer. And if they're being told that something can be done or that something different, as we've seen this happen, right? But it's not the applicant's fault if they ask and say, "Well, can we do it this way?" And somebody says, "Yeah, go ahead and we'll give you your CO." So I just, I think we're putting a, I would hate to see us put yet another burden on the applicant who is trying to do everything right, but may not be getting either full story, full information or full resources. I mean, I think, you know, an acknowledgement of the fact that the way it used to be and it used to work, I don't think this is necessarily the right approach to provide a solution.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but I don't know that we have the authority to do other than what we're suggesting. We have, we have control over what we say to the applicant and what we approve to the applicant. We don't have authority to tell the town engineer to do or not do anything. The only thing we can do is ask the applicant to make, make it, an effort to document where that change was-
But don't we do that in the resolution? Doesn't every resolution say that these are the things that you, as the applicant, have to perform, provide and do throughout the course of the project? Isn't that their binding contract with the town?
Yeah, I would say yes, but I don't know that it's clear to the applicant who's standing in front of us. And I think, especially when it comes to making changes. So when they depart from what they're doing, for, again, for good reason, I'm not saying this is done just, you know, carelessly. Somebody makes a choice to change something, they should be aware from the, from day one that they need to document that. And if they have all the documentation, they just walk in here at the end of the project and say, "Here it all is, town engineer approved this, the building department changed the door swing on this," or something like, and they have it all and we're done.
It's not only changes in the field, though. It's situations that we've come across where an application has been approved by us with conditions and not, and a CO would be issued well before any of those conditions were even put on the ground. Nothing's been changed.
That's not the applicant's fault. That's what I'm getting at, is that, you know, if there's, if there's a process, an issue with the process-
Yeah.
-we have to address that. If you're telling the applicant in an eighth inning of a nine-inning game that the rules have changed, not the rules have changed, but that you've got to go back and do things differently or open some walls and-
No, I think we're telling them day one to document it. That's, I think that's exactly what we're doing. I appreciate your point, but I think-
My ears are ringing.
We're asking for that, so.
But I think the resolution does that, right? A resolution is-
Here's a guy who's going to straighten it all out.
No, I mean, I just want to make it clear. I mean, we're sensitive to what you guys put into resolutions and do our best to see that they're fulfilled. If we think something is beyond a field change, we'll always come back here. The other thing I wanted to clarify, too, is like saying an application like this, which in the grand scheme of things isn't a big application, but we have a pre-construction meeting with the applicant on something like this where there's stormwater improvements, we let them know we want to come out there. When the infiltrators go in, we want to, you know, in that case, there's a swale. If you can figure it out and make it work like it's supposed to, then it's fine, but we'd be part of that. So I just want to make it clear, we do go out and inspect these things.
I don't think we're suggesting this-
No, it sounded like, I mean, I was hearing something that made it sound like we weren't involved in all. I mean, I have a much smaller staff than I used to, so, you know.
That's what we're, that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
The staff is much smaller.
But, but I just want to make it clear that even, you know, even at that, we still make it our business to show up at critical junctures in construction to see the underground infrastructure go in place. And we read them the riot act if they don't let us know that they're putting something in that we should have eyes on.
Rob, the intention, I thank you, Dan.
That's welcome.
The intent here is not to impose anything draconian on anybody, but just to send a signal back to us, okay.
Who issues the CO? Does this matter?
The Building Department.
Okay, so the Building Department should be the one that is making sure that the site plan and the resolution is complied with. You know, again, to me, they have the authority, for lack of a better term, to stop, put a stop work order, do all kinds of things that they can do if something is not being complied to. So we're in the process of people getting a CO before they should if they haven't fulfilled their duties of the resolution and the site plan.
And that's not been happening, as far, in certain cases.
But is that the applicant's fault?
Is, is it, this is, I guess, both a legal, legal and a planning issues. Can we put in our resolution that that certification prior to issuance of the CO has to come back to us from the Building Department before it gets issued? Do we have the authority to put that into our resolution?
To require the Building Department to certify?
Because the Building Department is issuing a CO for engineering, for everything, right? For the entire site work. Their, their CO is basically a certification that the plan has been followed, correct?
Yes, it should be, yes. It's also-
I mean, from a legal standpoint, that's, a CO, CO closes a building permit and the permit is issued based on our resolution. So if I reach that far and say the CO is a, is a closure of our resolution coming from one body, which is the Building Department, not the Town Engineer, do we have the authority to request that that be part of our resolution? Is that something for us legally to do?
Well, I think you have the authority to require that the town ascertains that the site plan has been done appropriately and that if it hasn't been, that the CO cannot be issued.
Okay.
We can do that?
I think you have that authority.
Okay.
I think you can say that. But I just want to point out that I agree that it's not the applicant's fault-
Right.
-but it certainly is the applicant and owner's responsibility to build out their site according to the approval that they've obtained.
Hundred percent.
For both building permit, any engineering permits, and the land use permit. So I don't find it quite onerous, although it may seem to certify something to have, you know, a certain heft to it, but I don't find it onerous to certify that you have fulfilled your responsibility.
Before you get your CO.
Yeah, it's just another way of looking at it.
Before you get the certificate of occupancy.
In other words, the applicant is now on notice to be vigilant as they're trying to close their project out and understanding things that are, may be happening with the season and the weather or other things, to take care of those things before it's, there's an immediate problem with the occupancy of the building. No one wants to prevent somebody when they're ready to move in to not be able to move in.
Right, right. I just want to play devil's advocate. As the building is going along, it's in my experience that as you build, you get your inspections, you get your electrical inspections, you get your framing inspection, you get all that. So I can't understand why at the end we should have a dispute about whether the thing was built right or not.
Well, you know, some of those inspectors and inspections are targeted. The electrical inspection, of course, is by an electrical-
Yeah.
-electrician.
Of course.
He's not going to be looking at whether or not the curbs and the landscaping is done properly, whether the lighting was done properly, you know, things of that nature. So they just don't, so.
I'm going to- I guess what I'm hearing is it's like we're shifting the responsibility and the tasks of the, what I'm hearing is the Building Department to the applicant. The applicant's going to say, "Okay, I'm all done." And the Building Department is then going to go out and certify that as well?
No, they're going to do their, they're going to do their inspections, of course. We want to make sure that they-
Why can't they certify when they do their inspections? Because isn't that the way it would work? The applicant would come back and say, "I'm ready for you to come in and do the final inspection so I can get my CO."
That's what we want them to tell us.
But wouldn't they be saying that to the Building Department because the Building Department issues the CO? To me, the responsibility of making sure that everything is complied with, yes, it's a hundred percent the responsibility of the applicant, but if the town is issuing a certificate of occupancy, whoever's doing that should be the one that's saying, "Yep, it's all done."
I understand the point completely. I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
If that was happening, we wouldn't need this discussion.
So the fact that it's not happening, to me, is a different issue potentially, I guess. So we're trying to remedy something that-
But it's still our resolutions that are not getting complied with.
That is an issue. I mean, that's a big issue.
What I'm trying to address somehow.
Again, we're shifting the responsibility and the accountability.
Well, here's, here's a scenario. Let's say that the CO is issued on a site that's not complete and the applicant did not have any requirement and did not know of any requirement that they had to complete their site. And they were given a CO without a complete site. They'd be subject to enforcement action. So it's really, in a, in a manner of speaking, it helps the applicant not end up in a situation that's not very good.
I could, I could see that.
Yeah.
But again, the reason, how you got- But again, the reason, how you got there and why, is if somebody's issuing a document that says this, this building is certified for occupancy when it shouldn't be, so.
You're, you're not wrong at all.
I don't want to be the devil.
It's Billy.
I get it, I mean, we need, we need to address the fact that changes are happening to these, you know, resolutions and site plans not being fully complied with, absolutely. I'm just thinking there's other things that need to be addressed as well, seemingly.
There's no reason not to start somewhere, at least, let's get us, again, it could be a single sentence or a paragraph, back to us, this is where I'm at.
Well, maybe as a compromise, we will leave the addition to each additional, uh, to, every time there's a resolution, we want to vote on the addition, that paragraph-
Yeah.
-to add it to it. So instead of making it a common-
Okay.
I mean, it's just-
Well, maybe we do that for now, but my suggestion would be that we seek other language that might, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing in a slightly different way. We're all, we're all trying to get to the same place, but I don't, I agree with Bob that maybe we're not getting there-
All right.
-with what we've done so far, so.
Sounds like the process might still be broken after we add this language.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
But at least we're not solving the problem, we're just kind of-
It gives us an, a signal of where the applicant is, that's all. And then we can go on from there. Let's talk about number four on the agenda, then, the Melendewick residence, also known as the Anderson subdivision. We have a proposed site plan, stormwater pollution plan, wetland permit, pre-permit for lot twenty point one. Good evening.
Joseph Rena, Principal Site Design Consultants. We've reviewed the resolution, we have no issues with the conditions of the resolution, and we hope you'll move to approve the project.
Okay, we have a memo from the Conservation Board in favor of the project, no problems with this, although they saw it some time ago. Uh, there's a tree, uh, tree memo is old, so that's already incorporated.
You had a late breaking from the town attorney, uh, town engineer.
Engineer, yeah, let's see what we got.
With no objections.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Move this forward? Let's vote on the resolution, then we'll, you want to add that condition to this one?
What do you think?
I'm going to stay out of it. I don't want to hear what I have to say.
Maybe we do.
You're going to comply with the resolution?
What's that?
You're going to comply with the resolution?
Comply with the resolution.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the opposed? You want to include that resolution?
Maybe we should ask Joe, how frequently, how frequently do you see changes that, that would-
Not so much change.
That would bump into what we're seeing, or, or changes that, that you have to make because what you discovered during construction?
I, I mean, it's a common occurrence during construction. You know, you, you have a, a skilled contractor, and he might find a better way to do something. And, and if it's going to create a delay of any type, or, um, you know, cause something to be sitting open when you have a rainfall coming, or whatever the, the condition may be, you're kind of tying their hands, and they may just say, you know what, let's just stick to the plan, forget about the better way to do it. And then I'm concerned about the, at the end, additional layers of delay, time delay that could, so if it has to come back to the planning board, so first, you know, planning has to come out and see, the town engineer has to come out and see, the building department has to come out and see, it has to be a consensus, who's deciding whether it's a significant change or a minor change, who's making that determination? Then it has to come back to the planning board. So if you miss a planning board meeting cycle, now you're waiting, whatever it may be. So, you know, it could add a significant amount of time delay to someone getting their CO. And I, I, I think there's, there's too much subjectivity to it. Again, and, and I feel like you're, you're possibly tying the hands of the right thing to be done out on a site at that instant, when that, that decision needs to be made, where, where they can't wait for someone to come out and decide, tell them it's a, it's the right way to do it, or the wrong way to do it, or they like it, or they don't like it. And then, you know, is it, is everyone going to be on the same page as far as, you know, all the, the different departments? Are they going to all be on the same page as to whether something is, needs to be reviewed thoroughly, or is not a good change, or, or whatnot? So that's, that's my opinion on it.
Do you go through a process within your own office, though, to document changes that get made to, to your drawings and your engineering?
We, we only get called in on changes if, number one, they need an opinion as to whether it's a good change or not.
Right.
Or if they get flagged for some reason and they've done something, and, um, they've been, you know, told by the building department, or the town engineer, or the planning department to come back, uh, you know, before you go any further, we want to hear from your engineer. Uh, that, that, that's about it.
One question I would have, I guess, is, maybe it's not so much about changes, but omissions. So let's say somebody is supposed to put a curb cut in for a wheelchair ramp.
Okay.
And they don't.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
It's mostly about things undone.
Undone, or, right. So I'll just come back to the idea that the, the entity that is issuing the CO, shouldn't they be the ones that are making sure that those things are complied with? And if we're, and if, in this resolution, or in the language to add to resolutions, we're putting that onus on the applicant, then I think it does create more cycles.
No, I, I see your point, and, and I think the cure for that is a temporary CO that gets issued for outstanding items. So if you did, if you missed a curb cut or something, you may be asked to bond it, and then you get a temporary CO, and you get, get ninety days or whatever to put the curb cut in, and then when you get it, you get your bond back and you're good to go. And if it's more than that, it's a bigger bond or a longer period of time. I mean-
From, from what I'm hearing, from what I'm, from what I'm hearing, right? I mean, you, you've granted a resolution, you signed a site plan. So you have the mechanism in place to make sure something is done right, right? That's, you, you've, you've said, it has to be done this way.
Right.
I think it's, it's, it's really the, um, the, the checks and balances during the construction, that's really the, the issue. I don't, I don't see it as, um, you know, I don't see it as, that you don't have the authority, or the departments don't have the authority to make someone come back if it, if it, if it's not in compliance with the approval in the site plan. Again, goes back to subjectivity. What is, what is a significant change, or what is a minor change? And at what point do you say, okay, you have to go back to the planning board? Or you know what, if you, if you plant three more trees over here, it solves the problem, go-
Right.
-and you're okay? Who's going to make, who's going to make that decision? Yeah. But anyway, that's all I have to say.
I, I don't, I don't see the problem with raising the awareness in the applicant of the responsibility. Obviously, there's been times when that responsibility wasn't paid attention to. And, and I'm not trying to put the, the onus there, but you got to be in the game all the way.
Right, yeah. And, and that could be done hammered home at the pre-construction meeting, because all the job, we have a pre-construction meeting. And depending if it's a DEP project, they're there, the town engineer is there, and whoever else wants to be there. So that, that could be done at that point also.
I don't want to belabor the point any longer. I think we've raised some issues, I think we, we are aware of what we're trying to do. I'm not quite sure whether, we have reached the best way to accomplish this at this moment, but I think we need to come back and revisit it.
I, I'll ask one question. Has, have we got legal guidance on this?
No.
Not yet.
We haven't. Well, maybe we should get it. I mean, maybe-
Yeah.
Maybe the, the law is, uh, I still say that as the building department goes along, they have all the rights to inspect, they inspect three, four, five times foundations, they do, they do concrete, they do everything. And so if the applicant is relying on the inspections to pass them, what would stop them from, from getting a CO?
If the inspections are thorough and complete, in terms of what we required, yes.
Okay, but the town, the town has the same building plans that the applicant gave them.
All right. We're, I get it, I understand what you're saying. I think we can go back and maybe look, talk to council and get some opinions on where
I think we should get council on this.
we go here. And, and move forward that way, okay? All right. Anyway, you got the, uh-
You're, you're going to vote?
Got the approval, I'm not going to bring it up again at this point. We're going to leave the application, the approval as originally drafted without that one.
That's fine.
But, I'm raising an issue that I think is important.
No, we should, we should pursue it.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay. Dorchester Glenn, this is a request for a second ninety day-
Did you, you guys have to vote?
We have to vote on it, on the resolution.
We did.
We did.
We did.
Okay.
I took a vote on a resolution as proposed without any changes.
Okay, you did, right, okay.
So you got that.
All right.
Go ahead. Dorchester?
Yeah, that's you. Ninety day extension?
Yes, ninety day extension. Um, we're, we're still, um, working on the DEP and Health Department approvals on that. We're requesting a ninety day extension.
Any issues?
No issues.
Okay, motion?
No, motion.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, we approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you got that, too.
Thank you.
All right. Final decision statement, oh, this is a discussion, rather, on Garden Lane Apartments, residential site plan, Old Crampon Road and Garden Lane. A twenty unit apartment, uh, complex is proposed here with parking site plan improvements. Anyone here on Garden Lane? Step up? Good evening?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Beautiful project. Thank you.
Uh, no, this is enough.
Yeah, yes. This one?
Yeah, I think we got it here.
This is-
You got it.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. Anthony Peely, uh, one of the partners in Garden Lane Development. And we're here just to discuss the draft resolution. Thanks so much for preparing it. Um, we're mainly in agreement with most of the items in there. There was an or section that regarded the open space and rec space, so we just wanted to finish the conversation we started at the last meeting to go through our plan for both open space and rec space. And this is, this is the excerpt from the, um, August eleventh, uh, draft resolution. So again, we're discussing code section three hundred twenty-one C three F in regards to open space, where four hundred square feet of unusable open space is required per unit. We're proposing twenty units, which brings us to eight thousand square feet of open space required per the code. As you can see here on the site layout, the eight thousand is required, and we feel we've met the eight thousand with those two sections, one in the front of the property and one in the back. The back being twenty-one ten square feet, the front fifty-eight ninety, totaling eight thousand square feet. Also part of the code, it called for at least, um, all sections that were going to be considered open space to be greater than twelve hundred square feet, which they both are, as well as, um, no more than one thousand feet from the units themselves, which again, uh, we feel we comply with. The other open item was the rec space, that's three hundred twenty-one C three G, where it speaks to ten percent of the site, um, needs, uh, the required, uh, rec space requirement. So the site is sixty-seven, eight seventy-eight, ten percent, brings us to sixty-seven hundred and eighty-eight. And again, that's what we are proposing in the plan. When we met with, uh, Mr. Taggert, we asked if there were any comps, because as you guys know, it's a, it's a bit vague on what, uh, is required for rec space, swing sets, play areas. Um, so there weren't too many comps in Yorktown, uh, but there was Crampon Crossing, so we went over there, we took a photo. Please forgive my son, he, uh, he's never met a smartphone camera he didn't like. But, um, so we just, they had a play area, we figured if that worked before to satisfy the requirement, we, we would try that. And so in addition to that play area, we have a volleyball field, we have, um, high-end hammered copper bird feeder, as well as a deluxe copper birdhouse, so there'll be plenty of birds, you know, in the area. We're proposing five metal rust-free commercial benches, um, and then four of those picnic tables, a putting green, a golf driving range, and a pro-grade frisbee goal. Yep. And on, on this slide here, you see, um, in addition, we have a putting area and a walking path. So the walking path is approximately just under a thousand square, uh, feet, so five trips around the nature area, uh, fi, it's about, was it a five-foot sidewalk? Five-foot sidewalk that goes all around the parking lot, five laps to a mile. So we feel like there's plenty of exercise for our residents, and, and again, in addition to the, uh, the putting area and the driving range. And with that, um, open to, uh, you know, we'll request some comments on if you feel that that, that should suffice or not, um. Sure.
I know Rich is not here, but if he were, he'd be bringing up the, uh, the idea that a majority of the land being set aside is at that entrance point where there's a steep grade, I believe.
That's right.
Making it, I don't know how usable, I mean, that's, you know, or so forth, but I know he'd be concerned about that as I, as I am as well.
So that's, oh, the open space? Like the rec area is what's going to be, you know, we, we anticipate having our residents, you know, play and participate on, and that's, that's flat, and there's-
Are, are you intending these to be amenities for the residents, or for general public?
Uh, amenities for the residents, I think that's what the code calls for. And, and unlike a condo project where, um, you know, there's, there's no incentive for the developer to keep up these amenities, um, just to, to, to ensure occupancy, you know, these, these are near and dear, near and dear to our heart, and we'll make sure that, uh, they're always top notch, because again, we want, we want full occupancy the whole time.
John, is there, is there a definition in, in the requirement for open spaces to grade or anything like that?
For the four hundred square feet?
Right.
Well, it says usable.
Okay.
So it doesn't say anything about the grade?
Okay, so usable-
Is up to your determination.
Okay.
Does require the play area of twelve hundred square feet.
Right.
Appears as though that can be provided.
Also, just to remind the board, can we go back to that, um, the plan?
In the upper right corner of the, of the plan, where we have a, a wetlands buffer, um, that's, that's nine thousand two hundred square feet of, of open space. The code doesn't define or require us to do our, keep our open space out of the buffer. Okay, but we respectfully are for now, and we, we're using the site, but the, the area that we're going to be calling our play area, or our rec space, or our open space, and see, they seem, seem to meld into one, there's going to be a lot of green space on this property, there, there really is. I mean, the building itself is very small. You know, we meet all the zoning requirements and code, and, uh, bulk regulations, so the building appro, is an appropriate size for the site. We're not, we're not over in any of that, uh, uh, any of that, uh, any of those regulations. So, I mean, we could, we could shift the open space- we could, we could shift the open space back to, uh, the buffer. Again, the code doesn't say that we can't have it in the buffer. And that's, that's pretty much dead flat.
How much area would you say you're talking about? That, that's buffer area that you're gonna land?
It's nine thousand two hundred square feet.
I missed that on here.
And you guys, you guys would maintain all of this?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, yeah, for...
But town doesn't, town doesn't have to come in and...
Unless they want, well, yes.
The classic, you know, which one of these sections are we going to, uh,
Well...
Go for?
It, it, it seems to me that the open space area is met two places, one in the front of the building and one in the, in the control area in the back.
Yeah, we, we split it.
But you're, you're saying to us that you're not counting that control area in the back, even though our regulations don't require it to be out of the controlled area?
No, we're not counting.
Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, the way, the way that the landscape architect designed this, I think, is a really, really nice approach where, you know, they have a kind of a density of, uh, activities in the one corner, and then there's open space also for the kids to run around, to play soccer, to do whatever they wanna do. There's plenty, there's plenty of, you know, adjacent space and, you know, with the walking trails and the landscape, and I think it's, it, it seems to be a viable approach to us.
Any other comments which, you know? No, I mean, I think they're, they're complying with kinda how these are laid out. And, you know, one key thing I just saw here is this idea of if the provision of such facilities is impractical, which in this case it's not, they're making very good use of the open space that's there. I know Dan had some comments in his memo. I presume they saw.
These are rentals, right? Yeah, rentals.
Did you see the engineer's memo from, uh, today?
No.
Get a copy of it.
Uh, one of the questions he's asking is the crosshatch section along the eastern boundary, what does that represent?
That's the buffer.
Yeah, just this very small little strip, just that. He's saying what is, what's the status of that? He may be referring to your site. No, no, no. Go back to your plan.
This.
This, right along that. That's small, it's probably like ten or fifteen feet wide? No, but is that your property or?
You know, is this our property? It keeps going back and forth. This is our property?
I think that was part of the property at one point, but maybe we understand it was set aside. You gotta go up to the mic.
You gotta leave the mic.
You gotta leave the mic.
Yep.
Um, the town engineer is raising, says what is the status of that area? So it could be unknown or...
I think it's part, uh, it was at one point part of the property. And this is years and years ago of ownership that it may have been set aside. This is what title, believed when we were purchasing the property, may have been set aside for a town easement.
Okay.
For drainage at some point, but never went through. So...
Okay. So it's still your property?
Right, Gene, remember when we had the title thing for it to, we could have claimed it as our property, but we would, we would have to go through some steps to do that, so we just thought we didn't wanna bother at the time.
You're, you're not saying it's yours and you're not saying it's not?
Right. Pretty much.
I mean, I mean, that's a status. I mean, at least we know.
But we're also not, we're not planning to build on it.
Oh, no, absolutely, yeah. The town engineer was just looking for, you know, where is it, so, okay.
Says part of lot eight. On, not on that map, but there's a, uh, G O O one? The cover sheet?
Uh, G O O one.
Now look.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Yeah.
It's got the curve in it.
Yeah, that's it.
At the shoulder of the road?
Uh, I lost it. I don't think it's a road.
You know, this is jogging my memory a bit. We, we wanted to factor in that as part of the properties, it would help, it would have helped us go along, and we decided to exclude it.
Too narrow.
So we're, we're treating it as if it's not ours.
Okay.
Maybe it's utility easement of some sort.
Yeah, and if it is, it's not impactful one way or the other, so...
Five feet wide.
Five feet wide.
I don't know what lot eight is. Anyway, the real threshold question that we need to determine is whether or not we're gonna accept the improvements on the site, satisfac- satisfaction of the recreation requirements of the town, or impose the requirement that they pay a per lot fee, a per unit fee rather. And I know that our chair has expressed concerns about the usability, I guess, of the, uh, portion towards Garden Lane. But I think there's adequate recreational facilities provided here that are usable, and I think you should accept the plan as presented.
And they have another area that's greater, greater than what it's called for, so I would agree.
In lieu of the financial.
I agree with that.
Okay. So we will put that alternative in the approving resolution, not the monetary one, but accepting the proposal that you suggested on your landscaping plan. And with that decision then, to, if there's any further discussion on this, there is a, there's some blank in there about the length of the grading area. I think that needs to be filled in. Anything else? John, anything else for us?
Uh, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, we just have one question on the resolution. Also, there was another fee towards the end of the document, item number five, and it talked about a general development fee.
Yes.
Of fourteen thousand four hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what is that?
That's a fee that's been in the code for longer than I've been around, so I can't really give you the history of it. Uh, but it's a, a fee that happens, uh, before, uh, the approval goes through. In other words, before you get your signed site plan, you have to pay that fee. It's, I think, seven hundred and twenty dollars per unit.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, so we have to go through, um, lead agency neg deck and approval. Am I right on this? Thank you. Motion to declare the planning board the lead agency on this application?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Approving, uh, the negative declaration that's annexed to the papers. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And finally, to approve the project, adopt the resolution that's presented, using the alternative, accepting the landscaping and recreation plan onsite as opposed to the monetary contribution. Is there a motion?
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
This... Okay, number seven on the, on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for a project located at six seventy East Main Street, up in Jefferson Valley. And this is for a, uh, proposal to remove a single-family house that's up there and a detached garage and create four two-story, three-bedroom townhouses with twelve parking spaces. Good evening.
Good evening. Will Angelillo from Hana Engineering here on behalf of the owners.
Motion to open the public hearing.
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Nancy. Okay, now you're official.
Yes. Uh, as you mentioned, we are tearing down a single-family home that's in disrepair, uh, on a half-acre lot. Uh, as part of that, we're removing some trees. Uh, we are proposing to construct, uh, four three-bedroom townhouses with a twelve-space parking lot and a stormwater, uh, stormwater management system. We have been to zoning to receive the necessary variances to build the project. We've also been to the architectural board there, uh, to have their review. And tonight is the opportunity for anyone in the public who wants to comment on the project.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to comment, uh, on this particular project? Please step forward. Nobody's breaking down the door.
It's always good.
Yes, I guess so. All right. Going once, going twice, all right. Um, I just want to make a comment before we proceed further. We do have a memo from the, um, Building Department, I believe, which was responded to
They requested...
By you on this, correct?
Sprinklers, whi- which we will, uh, work with the Building Department to address as part of our building permit application.
Okay. All right, motion to close the public hearing. No comment.
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, thank you. Let's see. Do we have anything to proceed with on this, or we have to write it up at this point?
No, we'll have to write it up.
Okay. I don't see anything. All right, thank you.
So when will we come back?
On the agenda for the, the final approval then. If there's anything else we have to discuss, we'll do it at that time.
Sure. What's the next meeting date?
September.
Thirteenth, I think.
Eleventh or eleventh.
Eleven.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Did we have an informational hearing on it?
We did. Number eight on the agenda is an application by Lowe's Home Center for, uh, continuing special permits for outdoor service. Good evening.
Lou Riccardi, I'm the store manager of the location.
I gave you some pictures there.
Yep.
That we took this afternoon.
So just tell, uh, tell us all what you're looking for here, what you have, and what you're trying to go forward with.
Uh, this is just a renewal of our temporary and our permanent outdoor storage and, uh, display. Uh, I believe it expired five years, and, uh, we're just looking to go ahead and renew that for the next five years.
All right, so just, just for the public to know, there's several components to this application, correct? So if you could just take us through where they are and what the, uh, status of each one is, then we can go forward from there.
So absolutely, so nothing's changed since the initial one five years ago. Uh, towards the rear of the building, up on the top right screen there, uh, we have recycle, recycling trailers where we have, uh, you know, any kind of steel or metal, any appliances that are returned from customers go there. Uh, the permanent staging area near the back of the building is, uh, for overflow merchandise, as well as customer orders that are being held until the time of, uh, delivery or pickup. Uh, in the front of the building, uh, permanent displays where we have, uh, our propane tanks for our customers to purchase, as well as any, uh, displays, whether it be lawn mowers in the summer or, uh, snow throwers in the winter. Uh, towards the front left of the building, our temporary storage display area, uh, takes up those initial, you know, thirty parking spaces up there when needed. And that would be for either palletized merchandise or for plant carts. Uh, to the left of that is the permanent outdoor storage where we have our trailer displays, uh, so landscaping trailers. Uh, we take up, uh, usually about twelve parking spaces for those. And then the term, the permanent display on the entire front sidewalk is for our live nursery section where we have some plant tables and, uh, things of that nature.
The one, one thing that has changed is Trader Joe's opened.
Yeah.
Right, so you've got the shared spaces across from where Trader Joe's is, and this is, you know, this drawing, I don't know if the number of parking spots where the Trader Joe's facility is, is accurate, but just anecdotally, any, you know, any issues with...
We haven't had any issues. So initially, when Trader Joe's opened up last, uh, last Memorial Day weekend, they had asked us to clear out that temporary storage area, just in anticipation of the grand opening and everything like that, which we did. And, uh, this year, we actually didn't even need to use that area. We were just, uh, we were able to manage it a little bit better this year, so we didn't even need it. Uh, but once that initial, uh, grand opening was done, we were able to go back to storage as usual. I mean, it's, it's busy, but it doesn't really encroach on our lot too, too bad. Uh, that area right there is, you know, right outside of our garden area, and there's a, there's a good sixty parking spaces going across the front there, uh, where it doesn't have any effect on Trader Joe's whatsoever.
The plan you have up there, uh, that we are seeing is, as far as the portion, I'm not sure what the direction is, to the north of, um, the drive that now goes in between Lowe's and Trader Joe's.
Yes.
Everything to the south of that's different. I mean, the parking layout is different, the store layout, it, or am I incorrect?
Oh, you're right.
So I don't know what impact that has on the total parking count that's onsite now, and I don't know what the original requirements are, because I don't see that on this sheet. I don't see a parking count of what you need, you know, what was originally required. I do have concerns, not with the stuff that's behind your building or around the, the sides of it necessarily, but I do have some concerns, I think Rob was talking about it, taking away all those parking spaces at this point, because now the site is going to be fully developed. Every pad is now occupied. I think that's a significant change between what you may have experienced when you got permission initially to do the temporary storage on the, uh, parking lot, taking away all those...
It's not seen on our plans here, but Trader Joe's did add their own parking spaces and gave enough for what they were considered to be compliant at the time as well. So in the front of Trader Joe's on Crampon Road, there's a whole bank of parking spaces that way, and then they wrap around the side of the building and also in the front of the, uh, what would be our front there, back of the building.
Mm-hmm.
So they put in...
That's sho- I think it's shown here, right?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I, I don't know if the exact layout looks like that, but yeah, they, they account, they accounted for enough parking spaces for what they were considered to be compliant there without taking away any of ours.
Yeah, and then you guys, you guys have...
This actually is a site plan that's incorrect.
That's what I'm suggesting.
That's the twenty seventeen...
This was the original before the store was even...
Right, the footprint of Trader Joe's is different.
And the parking is...
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Right.
And then I know over on the contractor side of your facility, there's like contractor parking, trailer parking?
Yes.
Does that impact the parking space count at all? I mean, is that...
That was, that was looked at.
Was it?
By the board.
Okay.
So that, that was looked at. Obviously, the, on this map, the areas that are shown were looked at and approved. Um, I think it's a little misleading, so there, there's permanent display, it says on the entire front sidewalk, it points to two spots, but it's across the whole facade. I mean, you can see in the pictures that there's every, there's, there's stuff there across that whole facade except where you walk into the building. Where the trailers are, there's a picture that shows you there. It's not total, it's not completely used for the amount of trailers that they have there right now, but it is used. The temporary storage area, it seems to me that there's no time to expect when that will be used and to what length of time it will be used, and maybe that should be a discussion. And the reason I bring that up is because the, the site is being built out almost to full capacity. It is a busy site.
The only area that really I have any real concern about is that temporary storage display area, which is the use of parking spaces. Because now the site is so built out that those are gonna impact the ability to park, whereas the others, I mean, if I go, if I go to Lowe's, I'm never gonna park in the back where the
Correct.
trailers are or...
So that area, we actually didn't need to use.
This entire year, we actually haven't had to take up an entire space. So my, my feeling is if that could be excluded from this approval, that would make me comfortable, because I think everything else you've been using in a very reasonable way, and it's not impacting the use of the, of public parking spaces. Right. So even though the site is mostly built out, I mean, I've gone to Trader Joe's and had to park within that red area that we're defining, so if that were to be used for other reasons, I think you'd start to have problems in the parking lot, so...
But you also need, I don't know if you looked through the pictures, but take a look at pictures nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, and even seventeen. That is the west, south, and east sides of the building. So the garden side, the rear of the building. So the garden side, the rear of the building, and the side where there is only a access drive on the north side that's adjacent to the berm that goes up to Conic Parkway.
Right.
As you can see, there is material stored.
Right.
In a U shape around the entire building, which is displacing, I would say, what did we count, Ian, about 50-something parking spaces? So I don't know where the employees are parking, but they're not parking along the west side, they're not parking in the back, there's no parking along the north. So if the site does run into demand problems.
It could be more.
It would be by virtue of this.
Also.
There's no approval for that storage. The only thing is that there's two spots in the back, you're supposed to have trailers for recycling. Those were not there today. I didn't see that. They may have been moved or something, but they weren't in the spots they were supposed to. And there is a lot of material back there on pallets, as you can see. So I think that is something to be aware of. If it's going to be temporary or permanent, I think you should deal with it. If it's going to take up 50 parking spaces, I think it should be acknowledged and looked at, so.
And we also have a memo from the planning, from John Landy, our building inspector. You've seen this from the date of August 9th, in which he is opposing the application. He says that this plan will result in the elimination of about 75 parking spaces and eliminate a pedestrian customer walkway. And zoning calculations for parking should be submitted to confirm compliance with the town's parking requirements. He's also concerned that merchandise will eventually expand and spill out and encroach on the fire lane, which has been a recurring problem, which was addressed by a memo violation as recently as June 9th. And the emergency exit doors are also, have also been obstructed from time to time. He says they should, they need to be unobstructed at all times. So he opposes it. So I'm just bringing that to your attention as well.
Well, all I can say is in defense of Lowe's, every time I went to Lowe's, whether it was afternoon or whatever time, there was always adequate parking, there was vacant parking spaces all over the place. So I would love to see them full, because I like to see the place do business, but we gotta take that into consideration, that they didn't, never filled up the spots, even though Trader Joe's came and all the hoopla of parking.
All right, I could tell you, sir, I've been with the company 18 years with the company now, and Memorial Day weekend, our busiest time of the year, I mean, we still had more than enough parking for, it wasn't even a, wasn't even an issue.
No, I have never had an issue there, never.
And as far as I can address.
I'd be where my truck to, and we'd take a two spot.
And the fire, the thing with blocking fire exits, that has not ever occurred on my building, not ever. So as far as blocking a fire door, that's never occurred.
Well, I think I would personally like to see your proposal superimposed on the current plan, and also the parking requirements that are supposed to be on this site, and, you know, how much, are they exceeded or not? I don't have that information to make, you know, an adequate analysis. What do you think?
Yeah, I think we need a comprehensive parking count.
Yeah.
At this point, that's updated. I don't have trouble with the storage around the back of the building and so forth. I think it probably could be done in a more space planning conscious way. We're probably using more area than you need to to store what you're storing there. So you could, you could be more efficient in storing it there. And I think the spaces along the west side of the building, those spaces could be used for, as an example, employee parking, to free up some of the spaces in the front. Because I think you're getting, you're approaching closer to the limit of this site than you ever were before. By virtue of Trader Joe's and any other site that's being developed, you're going to be at maximum, you know, ability to park people, and I think any intrusion into those parking spaces is going to be problematic. So I think the storage that you have around the back of the building needs to be designed and utilized in an efficient way. I think you just have it spread out a little bit too much.
Yeah, so the reason with the back of the building is for the tractor trailer drivers to be able to come in and make their turns to back into our loading dock?
Oh, no, but I'm talking about some of the U-shaped storage of pallets. I mean, those can be, those are taking up a lot of space. It may be easier for a pallet, you know, for a forklift driver, but it may not be an efficient use of the site. So you may have to work a little bit differently to, that's all we're saying, I think, so that's all I'm saying at least. But I think a comprehensive plan is what we need at this point, because we don't know what the traffic, what the parking count numbers.
I know.
Are anymore, so.
So we need a definitive plan with.
Yeah.
It's updated with the site plan showing Trader Joe's.
Absolutely.
And the count.
Yes, and the count.
So we know, okay, you've got X amount of spaces to work with that you can set aside for storage or not. I don't, we can't tell from here where we're at.
So I see the 30 spaces where the trailers are parked, and that's not uncommon at any Lowe's you go to, right?
Right.
I mean, it's an outdoor display. Where are the other 40 parking spots that are being occupied?
Around the sides and back of the building. So if you look at picture number.
So like nine and 10, you're saying?
Nine and 10, right, is the west side, and that's looking down the entire row, and you can see that in the left of the picture is the westernmost parking area that you can see on the plan, and that is filled with material. There's also material stored on the right, up against the cage that houses the garden supply.
Garden center, right.
And then as you move around to 11 and 12, that's what you encounter, number 11 and 12, when you first go around the northwest corner of the building.
And so where, in your pictures, John, where there's a white car, a red car, and a dark truck, those parking spaces continue on and are covered by those.
That's correct.
Materials, okay.
John, who supplied these pictures?
He did.
We took them this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
And then 13 and 14 is basically.
But those spaces were never a part of the special use permit, were they? I thought it was the, so, I mean, again, we come back to enforcement.
Yeah.
If there were an issue, and we got, a lot of town gets a lot of complaints about how bad the traffic is or the parking or what have you, and then we'd have every right to go back to Lowe's and say, you're going to have to move that stuff.
Yes.
Right?
It's a lot of stuff.
They sell a lot of stuff.
Goes around both, you know, all three sides of the building, so just making you aware of, while we're talking about temporary displays, there's a lot of storage happening around the other sides of the building.
Right. But if there's available parking.
Correct, and then it's also a seasonal store, so as the weather starts to break and we go into our colder months, that product becomes less and less as the year goes on. It's more of a seasonal thing.
Right. I mean, if there's available parking, I guess we need an accurate parking count.
Right.
Yeah, that's available. We've been doing that every time one of the pads comes in.
Yeah.
So you probably did it the last time we did Chipotle, so we can get that for you.
Okay.
I think what you're asking is you want to have a current plan that shows where the storage, outdoor storage, that's being requested, and you can make a determination on what goes around the building, to whatever exit you need.
Yeah, right. Yeah, but the special use permit really is for those 30 spots that they're occupying as display.
Right.
Which we knew from the beginning, right? So it's.
That's right.
And like I said, we didn't even use them this past year.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
And thank you for these parking space for the veterans.
Got it, sir.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
So if you need assistance, call my office, we'll help you get set up with whatever you need to do.
Sounds great.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank, I guess that's it, so we'll see you again.
Thank you very much.
Move forward on that. So I have a motion now, I'd like a motion to close the regular portion of the meeting so we can go into the work session portion of the agenda.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. On the work session, first item up is Kichwan Solar. Number nine on the agenda, located at 716 Kichwan Road. Good evening.
Hello. So just for the record, this is Julia Magliozzo with ECOG Energy. Why don't you introduce yourself?
This is Shelby Hang with ECOG Energy.
So we first received approval from this board for the Kichwan Solar project in 2020 two, yeah. And the project has been under construction since May, but in the progress of that construction, we realized there were some discrepancies with the landscaping plan that had been approved. It's not really compatible with how the property owners would like to use the remaining portions of the site that are not occupied by the solar farm. So we've proposed some changes to the landscaping plan. We had reviewed those with John and Robin on a phone call, and they thought it'd be best if we came to talk through some of those with you all, in order to get your eyes on the proposed landscaping changes. So we did submit a memo and those changes via email, but we do have them printed out, because I think it might be easier to see these if you have them side by side, so if you would like the printed versions, we do have those.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in the right-hand side of those folders is the memo that we submitted explaining the changes, and that includes the old landscaping plan with a bunch of sections circled with numbers in them. And then the left-hand side of those folders contains the new landscaping plan with the new planting locations. So we will still be planting the same number of trees from the original plan to the new plan, so we will still be planting a total of 198 trees. The locations and species have changed slightly. So I'll talk through some of the biggest changes that we made. Thank you for pulling that up. So one note, we originally had slated more trees for removal. We were able to keep 11 trees that were originally marked for removal are staying in place. That has affected our ability to plant trees in those locations, so you'll see some changes because of that. And also, one of the more significant changes, in our original landscaping plan, we had proposed white spruce as one of the native species to be planted. We have since proposed a substitution, so we are proposing no longer planting any white spruce, and instead planting Norway spruce in its place. This was recommended both by the arborist who did the tree inventory, as well as our landscape architect and the firm that is going to be doing the plantings. They're all in agreement that white spruce will not survive. Shelby can speak more to why that is, but they have all come to the same conclusion that Norway spruce would be a good replacement species, so that's what we're proposing in the new plans. And then the major changes really occur on the south of the plans, close to the southern property line on Kichwan Road. Really, the biggest issue in that area is we realized that there was a row of plantings that are between the new access road and the garden beds that the property owner would like to plant in that area. So in order to allow the property owners to access that area for planting, we will be moving the majority of those plantings south, closer to the property line. So rather than being up against the access road, closer to the array area, they will just be farther south, closer to the property line. We will also be filling in more trees in that property line than we had originally proposed to make up for some of the screening that we are moving to the south. That is the biggest change. Elsewhere on the plans, you'll notice that there are some areas where the property owner had specified they prefer not to plant trees in those areas, so they've just been moved elsewhere on the property. None of those were areas for screening, so we do not believe those are fairly significant changes. It's a handful of trees that got moved around. Again, the total for the planting is still the same. If there are any areas in particular you're concerned about, I'm happy to speak about those, but I think that, in broad strokes, identifies the biggest changes that we made.
I don't have a particular issues with, you know, moving things around. It appears you're keeping the counts the same. The only question I have is the choice of the species that you have, and I don't have the expertise to opine on that, but perhaps we can get a memo back from our tree commission, perhaps conservation between now and September, when we can then go ahead with this. What do you think about that?
Well, do you have a landscape architect?
We do, and we provided their opinion in that memorandum.
Well.
As well as the opinion of our arborists, but we're also happy to have other opinions from the various landscaping firms. We talked about this. I think the letter we attached to the memo.
You gotta talk it to the mic.
Apologies.
What do you think?
The letter we attached to the memo, down on the last page, kind of details from our landscape architect's opinion, some of the issues she saw with the proposed planting of the white spruce. Namely, and I'm going to have to read these out, because likewise, I'm not a landscape architect, but the use of the white spruce should be avoided because they're prone to numerous diseases and pest damage. Mites, aphids, and bag worms commonly attack them, and they're often affected by cytosporoc hanker and larula blight. If these trees do survive, they would require consistent monitoring and upkeep, which is, kind of goes against the intention of this planting, of it being a low maintenance screening for the solar array. So this was kind of their main opinion. Our arborist also penned a letter, which we're happy to submit as well, which spoke more to the suitability for the Norway spruce, in addition to there being a stand of Norway spruces that have existed on the property for the property owner's entire lifetime and his mother's memory as well. But also, they listed a couple other reasons. One thing, one of the most prominent ones is Norway spruce is suitable down to zone seven, and with the expected climate to get warmer in this area, and other proposed plantings that we'd gone over only being suitable up to zone five or six. We think that the long-term suitability of this Norway spruce really is the best bet for this land here.
I think we've seen the substitution in other applications, too, so.
You don't have a problem?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the substitution.
No, not at all.
And as long as your tree count is staying the same, I think moving it around for good reason is good reason.
What do we do next, then?
I think you can vote to accept the changes, and that this sketch will become part of your record.
I have one question. You referenced an access gate was relocated? So is that vehicular access or pedestrian, you know?
Yes.
Walking?
Yeah.
Yes, this is a very minor change. If you look on the top right-hand corner of our planting plan, so this would have been the document on the right-hand side, or left-hand side, pardon me, of your folder, the gate is really just on that northeasternmost corner, all the way up at the top right-hand corner. We just moved that gate from the northern side to the eastern side of that corner. The main reason for this is so that vehicles can go right off of that existing gravel road into the array, rather than going north around some trees and then coming in there.
Great, thank you.
We're in work session, so we really can't vote on it, but I can give the main indication. I don't know that we need to vote on it.
Well, we do what we want.
We're in work session, though.
We can say that we approve the plans, and they can put it in a permanent, permanent settlement.
We need to do a formal resolution to change it?
For this kind of change, no, I don't believe that you do.
Right, okay.
You know, the landscape.
Just put a memo in the file and.
Yes. Landscaping plan is staying largely the same, there's some things moving around.
Okay. The adjustment, it's normal.
Right, what it, its effectiveness is being increased by the changes.
Okay. Okay.
Great.
Good, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have they started your job?
No.
No. Number 10 on the agenda is the Old Croton Gate House, the review of the lighting plan on Croton Dam Road. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mark Talwaz, I'm here representing the Bureau of Water Supply for New York City DEP, and going over the request just to review some changes we have during our construction of our new chlorine dioxide system we're building at the Old Croton Lake Gate House. Two of the items, one of the fixture items that we had previously proposed back in our January 2022 presentation is now discontinued. It's not available, so we're proposing an equivalent. And the other item, which was proposed at the time, was not really fully shielded for security reasons, and we're proposing a new fixture that is fully shielded that meets the town code requirements. There was three conditions back in January, and we're agreeing to meet all those conditions. One of the conditions that came up during the previous discussion was the color, temperature of the lights, fixtures, and we're proposing to meet that.
Okay.
So fixtures A and B will be utilized at the 90-degree?[1761.71]
Yes, they will be pointed down, they're adjustable and they'll be pointed downwards. Those are the unloading chemical lights for deliveries. The security lights will be fully shielded and they'll, will select the lower temperature for the color temperatures.
Any concerns, questions?
No, sounds like compliance.
Yep.
All right, so we, do we approach this in the same manner?
Uh, yeah, this is compliance with the conditions, so just, just accept it.
Okay. All right, good.
Very much. Do I need to return back in September for the final, or is this just acceptance? Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I may need to get another set from you, but we'll talk after.
Okay, thank you again.
Number eleven on tonight's work session agenda, this is Miles of Smiles Daycare. This is a site plan discussion at three, six, six, seven Hill Boulevard, which is proposing a daycare for the site of the former Gymboree at the, uh, closest to Route Six at the Biffers Shopping Center, right?
Correct, correct.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, my name is Peter Helms with the Helms Group Architects in Cottona, New York. And I've been trying for the last half hour to get this, uh, enter the host name and address. I've put in every address. I have this on a flash drive, John, I don't know if I can give that to you and just bring up.
Ian, um, I don't, I don't know if you have anything different than you've already given us, otherwise we can just put up what we have already.
Um, you know, it, it was updated a little bit, so if, if it's not too much trouble, just the first drawing on that. So tonight with me, I might as well start, uh, we have, uh, Jody Fitzgerald Mathias, who is the tenant, uh, prospective tenant. We have Helen Biffer, uh, and her daughter Lydia, who are the, uh, owners, uh, of the shopping center and have been for many years.
It's been a while since I've. Yeah.
In any event, uh, the, I think you're all familiar with this, uh, yeah, um, I don't know if this, um, laser pointer, does that work on a screen like this or not?
I don't know, try it.
We'll try it. Um, I, I know it works on, let's see.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't work on the screen, that's, if it's projected up onto a wall, it works fine, so I can't use this. So in any event, I'll explain, uh, you all know the shopping center, it's been there since nineteen seventy-five, uh, a long time. It's known as the Lord Shopping Center. Uh, it's basically, uh, filled with, I think, three restaurants, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, on the right-hand side, the far, uh, left or south end of the building is, uh, the tenant space in question. Uh, it's, uh, previously was used by Gymboree, which was a, uh, preschool and, uh, for a play and music area for children. So I think this is kind of a similar use with the proposed daycare. Uh, however, it's my understanding we need to go to zoning for a special use permit, and, uh, zoning is most likely gonna refer us back to planning board. So we're hoping to whet the appetite of the planning board tonight and just let them know, uh, what we have proposed. Uh, it's basically, uh, any signage will be submitted, uh, separately as required by the town for a separate signage permit. Uh, the existing space at the far end, uh, it is, um, roughly three thousand, uh, on the drawing here, let me just skim down, three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight square feet. Um, and at the very end of the building right now is a large concrete patio area at the south end. Um, in order to have a daycare and have it licensed by the state of New York, who, uh, the applicant has already been before, and gone through and approved the plan layout and so forth. Uh, they need a small, uh, outdoor play yard that's going to be able to accommodate fourteen children at any one time. It would be no more than fourteen. So it's a relatively small area, it's roughly, uh, eleven hundred square feet at the south end. And what we're proposing is to remove the concrete patio that's there right now and to, um, install a fence. We're proposing a six-foot privacy fence, it'd be a PVC-type decorative fence with, uh, some decorative caps on it, uh, for privacy and security. And then the surface would be, um, redone with what's known as a Duraflex product. It's a rubberized, uh, permeable porous material. So we basically, uh, the net result would be we would be reducing the overall, uh, impervious surface by about five hundred and nineteen square feet. So, uh, that, that's, uh, the result of the outdoor play area. Um, with regard to parking, if you see the spaces to the, uh, top far left, we're looking to, uh, designate with signage, three of those spaces as dedicated, uh, daycare spaces for drop-off and pickup of the children. Uh, these, the hours of operation of Jody, if I say, stated any incorrectly, just jump in. Uh, is it seven in the morning? Six-thirty in the morning till six PM at night. So the beauty of that is the restaurants, uh, that pretty much occupy the rest of that building, you're all familiar with, uh, really don't get started until, uh, late morning, early afternoon, lunch, and then, uh, maybe up till three. And then it slows down, uh, uh, from that point until maybe six, and then it picks up after. So it's kind of a ideal use, uh, to, uh, have the flexibility with the available parking spaces. Uh, the applicant, uh, because it's important to have enough parking, if you're gonna have a successful facility, has spent, uh, a number of occasions going out during the week, because they're only open Monday through Friday. Uh, and I think two or three of the restaurants close on Monday, uh, two, two of them are closed on Monday. But that parking lot is, uh, got no more than fifty percent, uh, of the cars in it right now. So there's quite a few spaces, uh, available at all times during your operation. She was there early in the morning is the most available, and then, uh, uh, later in the afternoon. The staff would park in the north parking lot, which is, uh, the space is up to the north. And, uh, that's pretty much a, uh, brief synopsis. I mean, I, I don't know that it's far different from the previous use that occupied that space. Don't know exactly what they, they did in there, but it was, uh, signage on the building for preschool and then games and, and play and music and things of that nature. So, um, ideally, if, uh, there's any way, and it may be premature, but for the planning board to, uh, voice any concerns or, uh, I don't know whether the meeting with the zoning board is on the fourteenth of September. Uh, and, uh, maybe, I don't know if we can avoid coming back to the planning board, or whether we'll have to come back to the planning board, but that's the purpose we're here tonight to whet your appetite.
Let's address that question first, you know, in terms of procedure, and then I, I have a couple of, maybe two or three points to make. But John, perhaps you could address where we fit in, uh, on this particular application?
The, the special permit approval is done by the zoning board, and in a case like this as a daycare center, in other words, not a, not a home daycare with smaller amount of children, but a daycare center, which I think disqualifies us. It's required to have a plan of development, a site plan. So typically, the zoning board is asking for your run-through and review of a site plan. And most often, we've actually done a resolution of approval, and then it goes back to the zoning board for their final approval.
Can we do that in an expedited manner? In other words, or do we need to go through our public hearing process and things of that sort on this?
Uh, I'll look what we've done with the daycare centers. It will have a public hearing through the zoning board, so I don't believe that you need to do that.
We can do it together if we have to. I have two concerns. Um, I saw that you put in some old blueprint, old plans, when this was originally laid out.
We have, we have one of them at the very end here, but, uh, we, we, I should say, my father, uh, who's no longer with us, uh, designed the building back in nineteen seventy-five.
Okay, so there's, there is.
So we do have the drawings on the whole property.
I noticed that, and I also know this because I drive by that all the time, I live up that way. The original set that was, you know, the blueprints hasn't, the driveway access right in front of this proposed site, exit only.
Correct.
Has that been changed at any point, or is that gonna go back? Cause I don't remember seeing any signage leaving the site.
If, if we could flip through to the last drawing, please? It's very, uh, different from the, uh, CAD drawings nowadays. Um, all the way, there should be, um, it's a scanned copy, you're, you're, you're gonna have to skim through all of that. It's the last drawing, there, there you go. So it's hard to see this drawing, but tho- those were the original drawings approved by the planning board in nineteen seventy-five. I think it was June, uh, ninth or, or thereabouts, uh, it's on the drawing. Um, and you can see it is, uh, exit only, you're absolutely correct, that, uh, south curb cut. And then they have the in and out, uh, in the cent, center of the.
Went over, yeah.
Correct, exactly.
Are you proposing to maintain that distinction between that?
I, I wouldn't see any reason why not.
Okay, is there any, I don't know if there's any signage up there anymore that indicates that, but maybe you should consider putting it back, if there is.
I mean, does anybody, Jody or Helen have any, uh, objection to putting?
Okay.
We're happy to put that back.
And the other concern that I have, and I think our board has expressed this in other scenarios where we've had child, you know, play areas adjacent to parking and streets to make sure that they're secured in such a way, you know, protected with more than just a, a light fence. Maybe you can incorporate something in there that, and I'm, if you did forgive me, I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Where you have some kind of safety measures built into the fencing around that play area.
If we go back to the first drawing again, uh, this makes it easier for me, when I have to go back and forth, but, uh, uh, fortunately, uh, the location of that upper patio right now, uh, you can, if you look closely at that picture and zoom in, there is about a four-foot retaining wall, stone retaining wall. And it's set back quite a distance, uh, from the intersection of Route Six.
Okay.
Um, so that in itself is gonna be, um, a, a, a good safety, uh, factor that somebody would, you know, if they crossed and went over all that far, they would, uh, hit a four-foot stone rubble wall. So the, the play area would be located directly above that, where, where the patio is now.
That's all I have.
It's a very good point. Yeah, that's a little bit better, you can zoom in and see that.
That's, I see it, yeah.
The question I have is you have three parking spaces, you said, dedicated for the drop-off areas for the children?
We, we would like to, yeah.
The most of the, the three spaces to the south?
To the very south, closest directly in front of their tenant space. So if, if you zoom up to the top of that screen, um, you'll see those spaces there, I think cross-tatched in top left.
Yeah.
Uh, one more sheet up, you're on the right sheet and just over to the left.
Yeah, my, my suggestion is you take a look at the possibility of perhaps moving that curb cut to the north to eliminate traffic from impacting the, cause I have a feeling that somebody is gonna, they're gonna use that as an entrance to drop their kids off, and it's supposed to be exit only, so they're gonna use that as an entrance. And I think if we were to move the curb cut further to the north, maybe by three or four spaces, it's first of all gonna discourage that, and secondly, it's gonna, you can design that, so it's truly, truly an exit. And that way, people are backing out and children getting out of cars is not gonna be impacted by somebody going in the exit right where that's all happening. And I think it would move that, that activity further away from those three spaces.
That is a town road, uh, John, is that correct?
Hill Street is, yes.
Hill Street, okay, so we would need DOT approval or anything like that, so it's, uh, certainly doable, uh, I mean, I would say.
I think you should take a look at it and, and see whether it's worthy of pursuing. I'm just, it's thinking of it as I'm sitting here, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a, it's a good point, and I, I guess I would like to offer back, uh, for expense, uh, but to, to maintain the safety. If we could put, uh, good signage in there, do not enter and re-stripe the arrow, uh, exit only, something like that, and see how that works. Uh, then I think if it's not to the satisfaction of the planning board, I think we'd be willing to make the change with the curb cut. Excuse me? A, a berm? You mean, uh, uh, you know, I don't know what the drainage situation is on that.
There's tire shredders, you know, when you rent a car.
I mean, I don't wanna hold up the water on site there, but I think we would like to try with good signage. Right now, I think everything's burnt out, I, I don't think there's any arrows painted on the thing.
I don't think signage does the, I think better design is a, is a way that really fixes it.
And it's a safer. If that's exit only, then those three spots have to do a one-eighty to get out.
Well, they would back, they would just back out and then just go directly out. Yeah, they would.
I'm just thinking of, we were just talking about lows, the, the exit, when you're westbound on two oh two, and you're gonna go into Trader Joe's, that's supposed to be a right-hand turn. I, I've seen ten people in the last two weeks on going eastbound, and they'll make a two-hundred-and-seventy-degree turn to go in and exit.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah.
And there's signs, and I think people are gonna do what people are gonna do, and we're gonna discourage it, I think, through trying to make that better.
Um, I don't know, any objection if we had to do that?
Okay.
So I think.
I'm taking, take a, take a look at it at this point, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, if the geometry works out and it, I think it'll, it'll eliminate a potential, you know, accident or accidents.
Good, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We, we may be back before your board, I guess, at some point, right, or we'll see where.
Well, we're very happy to see vacant space being filled.
Absolutely, and I, I think, I think it'll be a benefit to the other tenants too, you know, to bring people in, so it'll be. Thank you very much.
Lots of luck, good to see you, take care.
You want your, uh?
Listen, here, there are fifty.
Take the zip drive. Okay. Number twelve on the agenda is MJM Land Development. This is a discussion at thirty-two thirty-two Gomer Street. Site design consultant is the, representing the applicant. I believe this has now gotten flexibility approval from the town, am I right?
Yep.
So we're back.
I'm back.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again.
Um, yeah, so the last time we were before you, we showed you a flexibility plan, which is the plan I have up on the screen now. Um, where we took advantage of, um, the ability to reduce some of the standards, making the lots a little smaller. Uh, modifying some of the setback requirements and whatnot to, to, uh, provide a plan that has reduced impacts, uh, on the wetland buffer. Uh, specifically, you know, where you have homes or, or the cul-de-sac which end near that, near that buffer. Um, and this plan shows only a portion of the road, um, coming in off of Cordial, that goes through the top end of that buffer for that wetland that's on the east side of the, of the site. So we, you sent us to the, uh, town board, uh, they authorized fle- the use of the flexibility standards. Uh, so we developed this, another plan. And there was some discussion about trying to pull that, that road coming off of Cordial further out of the buffer. So we did a, a, another plan which, um, so as you could see, um, we've taken that road and kind of put a little crook in it when you come into the property, and we're just riding that top edge of that buffer now. Um, we've shortened the cul-de-sac, and we're able, we're still able to comfortably get the six lots, um, from that, uh, access point in there with, with, uh, minimal impact to the buffer. And still allow plenty of room around the residences to have a nice piece of, uh, property or yard or whatever improvements and, and not have any impacts to the wetlands or the buffers. So, um, this is the plan we're proposing that we think is the better alternative to move forward with, uh, and, uh, we'd like to get your opinion on that. Comments?
Um.
Go ahead.
I mean, I think you've done all you can to, to stay out of the control area as much as possible, if you're coming in off of load or at all, uh, of, uh, Cordial at all. Um, there's really no issues with the lots coming off of Gomer, cause you're out of the control area completely.
Correct.
Um, and. Is this, is this the conventional plan that you're talking about, or are you using some of the aspects of flexibility to get?
No, this is, this is using the, uh.
This is getting, using flexibility to get to where you are?
Correct.
Okay, so just in, in quick summary, without going to every lot, can you kind of give us a summary of where you used the flexibility to, to get this?
Mostly in the lot areas.
Okay.
And frontage. So in some, in some areas, we have a, a little bit less frontage that would, would be normally.
And a deeper lot.
And a deeper lot.
Okay.
And also, I believe the road width itself off of Cordial, is that right? Or is that something that was independent?
Oh, you said it twenty-four feet, right?
Yeah, we, uh, right now, we're showing it twenty-four feet, we could, we could, we could bring that down in, in width, um, and, and still, still be a comfortable. and still, still be a comfortable road for a six or seven lots. It's really not a lot of lots.
It's not giving us anything if you were to do that, though?
No. Well, it gives, it creates less impervious surface.
Right, but I mean, functionality wise-
Yeah, functionality wise, you're still gonna be-
Not getting anything.
Right, you're still gonna have the same access.
So, I know, I mean, I don't hear any reason to make that less than 24 feet, as I, unless you're telling me I'm not considering something other than impervious area.
Yeah, I, I think for, for six lots, I think 24 feet is-
Right.
More than what you need. I think you could go less-
Okay.
And still have safe emergency vehicle access. You know, you, we're not, if this was, if this was a, you know, a 1,500-foot cul-de-sac and you had, you know, 40 homes on it, then I would say, okay, yeah.
What is the, what is the length of the cul-de-sac just?
I, I think they are, I think the, the one off of Curry, I mean, Gomer is 500, about 500 feet, and I think the other one is about 800 or 700.
So we're not even close to what? Okay. I, I don't see, I don't see a reason-
I'll go either, you know, if you want to go 24, we can go, go to 24. That's not a problem.
But you're able to handle the, the runoff from a 24-foot road. It's not like you're creating a problem that's a struggle to-
We have, we have to do that. So-
Right.
You know, that's, that's a step I'm looking to get to, because until we can figure out what layout we're working with, I can't go to the next, the engineering step to figure out what I'm doing with my stormwater. Can this, you know-
I think what I'm saying, though, is you know enough, you know,
Yeah.
at this stage to know that the difference between 20 and 24 feet is not gonna make an engineering problem that you can't solve on the site.
Correct.
Okay.
It's just a matter of size.
All right.
Well, I don't have a conceptual problem with this layout. I think this is what we were looking for all along. I think this is, accomplishes a lot of things. I have a comment in our record from one of the neighbors, you know, concerned about drainage. And I understand what you're saying is that now that I have a layout, I can work on the, once I have the layout, I can go and look, work on the drainage part of it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And the applicant has, has agreed to, so in, in a typical situation, we're required to meet the runoff conditions as, as they exist today or before the development. He's willing to go above that and go for further reduction. So putting, putting in larger systems for each individual residence and for the roadway, that would give us, you know, an extra, an extra maybe 10, 15, 20% reduction over existing conditions. So it would really go a lot towards answering any questions regarding runoff.
I, I listened to the, to the public hearing that it was in front of the town board, so there was a lot of, and I listened to it several times. And I, I think it would be useful at this point, just to, to restate to the, to this board, where does the water flow currently? In other words, where is the high point? Where are the low points? Where is the water traveling from right now, before any development has been done?
So essentially, from, let's say the, the, right about, just past the second lot in.
Okay.
Generally, everything flows to the wetland.
Okay.
The high point on this lot, on this side, rather, is, is up in this area here. So everything generally flows towards the wetland to the west or to the, towards the wetland to the east.
Okay. So water from this site-
Those are the low points.
Is water from this site going to the north at all?
No, the grade, the grade doesn't work in that direction. The grade is-
Okay.
Taking everything in the southerly direction.
Because I think, I think there was some conversation in the comments made to the town board that water from this site was going to lots that exist on-
Yeah, it wouldn't, because it, just the grade doesn't allow it.
Okay. So, so jumping ahead just conceptually, all the, all the, the stormwater is gonna continue to go in the directions that you just described. It's gonna go towards the wetlands, either from the Gomer Street side, or it's gonna go from the high point towards the east.
Correct.
Okay. And then it's gonna be, it's gonna be treated and brought into the existing waterways?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Just as a procedural point, okay, at some point, we are going to have public hearings on this. I don't, have we had anything on this yet?
No, you should, you should set up for the public informational hearing.
Right.
Tonight.
Okay, so why don't we do that? All right. I know there are some people who are interested in this. I saw you had your hand raised, sir. We're not in a position tonight to take your comments, but we will have an opportunity in September. We have something else in September or not? Anything?
Guiding, yeah, guiding eyes. And then we had something here tonight, but I don't think it's a-
Not a full schedule for?
Why don't we schedule this for the public informational hearing?
Yeah.
The first meeting in September. At that point, you'll have, people will have an opportunity to raise issues, discuss this, ask questions. And then after that, I believe there'll be a second formal public hearing as we finalize the direction that this plan is gonna go. So you'll have those two opportunities to commit. Okay, so why don't we do that? We'll set it up for public information for September. By then, you'll have more detailed plans, I assume.
Yeah, not really. I don't know if we'll have enough time to get-
Well, as much as you have.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can certainly work on the concept here, but you know what the areas of concern are to address.
Couple things. Whatever you're gonna have, I need by the 25th.
Okay.
The other thing is we need your wetland delineation report, so that our folks can do that.
Right, yeah. So our wetland consultant seems to have moved away, and we're just finding that out. So we're, we're looking to get a new wetland consultant and bring them in. I don't, I don't know if we'll have that together prior to September 11th. And I don't know if that's critical for September 11th, for the P I H, but if that's the case, we, I, I, it might be tight.
Well, the public information hearing is preliminary in any case, so-
That's right.
It's, it can be subject to verification of the wetlands. I think we're, we're close enough with this, I think.
Yep.
So I, I don't expect a gross conceptual change. I don't think you do either, right?
No.
So.
I have a good question, Joe. On the, the grade on the lower right-hand side of that screen, right? That seems to be kind of the steepest grade, at least where, you know, near that wetland.
You're saying over here?
Yeah, yeah. So coming down, well, we come into the back of the homes on Adella. Where will the water from those new, three new lots, where, where will it go? How will that be handled?
Well, anything off the roof and driveways, we're going to have to capture and treat either infiltrators or some type of rain gardens or whatnot. Anything beyond that, I mean, we're, we're, we're hoping to leave a fairly good tree line in the back here of natural vegetation. If we have to, and if, if it seems like there's gonna be an excess amount of water running in that direction, we can create a swale system and take it over to the wetland area. That, it's another way we can deal with that. I haven't, I haven't thought that out through yet, but until we get, you know, start to, start to really get into the engineering of that, I won't know.
Are there stormwater drains on Adella that you're familiar with?
Yes, there are.
So my, would you ever contemplate tying into those?
I, I don't think we can, because that's, that's a private, that's a private road, and the drainage in there is private. We would have, we would need to have an easement through that property to do that.
But isn't there a conveyance through either that right-of-way to the south or the back end of some of the Adella apartments to the wetland to the south?
Yes, but I, I am not 100% sure if it's on our, our site or not.
Well, I'd be, I'd be a little concerned, only because I know there's some occupants or residents on Pine Grove that are below where that new development is, or these new lots were built up on top there.
Right.
And a lot of that stormwater was sent down that hill into the existing stormwater drains there, and it's literally, I mean, obviously, the storms we've had recently have been crazy, but they've seen a huge overflow.
Yeah.
And kind of, you know, the, the stormwater pipes are not large enough to handle the volume, not only from the our own neighborhood, but from the one up on top of the hill. So I wouldn't want to create another situation like that.
Okay, well, we're gonna keep those things in mind.
Do you have enough from us to?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Should we talk about Cordial Road at all, or?
Go ahead.
I mean, one of the topics that came up at the, at the town board hearing on flexibility was the width of Cordial. I kept yelling at the television, when is somebody gonna say anything about the width of the road being improved? Everybody was accepting the fact that it's 20 feet and it's gonna stay 20 feet. I don't accept that. I think we should take a look at improving Cordial, because this, whatever the width of this cul-de-sac is going to be, it's still gonna come out on Cordial, and Cordial is still 20 feet wide. So you could make the new cul-de-sac 50 feet wide, and it's gonna empty on a 20-foot road, which is, unless we look at changing it, it's gonna stay 20 feet. So I think we should take somewhat of a look at it and see what it would take to bring that up to 24 feet. And then secondarily, decide who contributes to that and how does that get accomplished? So I'm not asking you to, to answer the second part of that, just maybe look at the first part of it. How long is Cordial? What would it take to improve that road? And then we can discuss it.
I'll look at that.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything else from you?
Nothing here.
All right. See you in September on that one.
I'm not going anywhere.
I know.
But you're going to anyhow.
But you can't.
I know we can't.
You've got, you've got to come back. You've got to come back in September and talk about it. I'm sorry.
I'm not taking anything. There's a 50-foot right-of-way that the town owns.
Sir, please. Take your comments and hold them until September. We'll come back. We'll hear you.
Shut yourself in a foot.
Enjoy public comment, you know?
Yeah, Lou. So this is a Grissage subdivision.
Let me, let me, I, I didn't even call it.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I got something else. This is number 13 on the agenda, Grissage subdivision, which we haven't seen in a while, located at 3319 Stony Street. It's a proposed 10-lot subdivision on eight acres in an R120 zone.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry.
So again, yes, you have not seen this in a while. We've been working on some additional information. So at this point, we have a 10-lot subdivision, as, as you can see in front of you here. We've had a P I H on this already, and we were-
Yep.
Looking to move towards a public hearing on it. The one missing piece was we were working on tree mitigation and weather mitigation and working with the town consultant. So Steve Moreno is here with me, and he's going to fill you in on what he's prepared to address all that. And maybe we can talk about a public hearing if you think it's ready.
You may yourself a friend.
He's not coming to the Christmas party.
Even if you invited him, he's still not coming.
Trying to help, trying to help him out. I don't understand.
Good evening. Steve Moreno, Tim Miller Associates. As Joe mentioned, we've been involved as the environmental planners for the, for the project. Did the wetland delineation a couple of years back. We have met with Barton Le Judas on the site to confirm the wetland lines. So the wetland line, as it's being now shown on the plans, is, the line is confirmed by the town's consultant. During the interim, we've put together a wetland mitigation plan. Joe, do you have the plan that shows the wetland as it's being disturbed there on the south side of the site? That's it? Okay. You may recall from how the, the project is laid out. These glasses to see the screen and the other glasses to leave my memo. Site comes in from the, from the west. There is a wetland on the, in the northwest corner of the property that does receive runoff and such from the south, moving towards the north. As a result of that, there's a wetland. Historically, there's a wetland on the site, kind of where that second lot is off of the, off the existing road. That would be filled in as part of this project in order to access the cul-de-sac and the areas closest to Stony Street. So since that involves a, some wetland fill, what we're proposing is wetland mitigation at a two-to-one ratio in order to offset that. And as part of those discussions also, you can see there's a road connection to the existing road to the south as well. What we've done is, again, we've prepared a wetland mitigation plan. We've prepared a streetscape plan, road, a road, street trees plan in compliance with the town's regulations. The regs call for a minimum of two trees per lot frontage along the new road. We've provided that. And there are some additional trees on the wetland side there to the north that we've also included. So there's a total of 57 new trees being planted on the site as part of the landscaping for the road, as well as another 19 trees and number of shrubs and other materials within the wetland mitigation area. Recently, as of last year, we went back out to the site when we saw that on the existing tree surveys, which were done several years back, there were a number of trees that didn't quite make it onto the, onto the tree survey, either because they were too small at the time of the original survey, or they were just missed during the course of, there's a, a lot of trees out there, as I'll get into. So some of those trees were missed. We went out and, and surveyed an additional 100 trees on the site, and those are now on the plans as well. So there's an additional 100 trees. So just to kind of go through the numbers, I did submit a, a letter to the board kind of outlining the tree law and how this site applies. To my embarrassment, the numbers in that letter are not entirely accurate. I had someone new in my office working on those numbers, and then I got to check them today to be sure for tonight's meeting. And, and so now I've updated, actually, so.
And they're still work, they're still working for you?
Yeah, they have to be given a chance. Yeah, these things happen.
You got a new letter?
I have, I don't have a new letter yet. We did receive comments from the tree, from the tree commission as well, which asks for some additional information regards to sizes of trees that are being removed and stuff as well. So we're in the process of preparing a response there. Anyway, in total, on the eight-acre parcel, there are 658 trees that were surveyed as part of the, the survey work that's been done. Of those 658 trees, 100 trees actually were surveyed and are showed on the plan, and this is one of the things that we missed, are under eight inches in diameter. So there was a number of four- and five- and six-inch trees that had been surveyed and that we were previously counting, which aren't actually protected under the town's tree code. So we've taken, taken those trees off the list. There's also invasive trees, the black locusts and Norway maples that we've discussed at other meetings. So those have come off that 658 number as well. So we're now down to a total of 475 protected trees on the overall property, protected as defined by the code. Of those 475 trees, a number of the trees that we had previously described as being removed were those four- and five- and six-inch trees. So by taking those kind of out of the equation, we're now down to 218 trees, or less than half of the existing trees on the site will be removed as part of the development plan. 251 trees, as opposed to 218 trees, will be preserved on the site. 251 of the protected, town-protected trees. Again, there's 251 trees that are gonna be left, 218 trees to be cut. We're planting 57 new trees along the street, along the road, as well as in some areas that are currently open, particularly along the north edge, northern edge of the site, areas that used to be, there was a big barn back in there. There's some agri, formerly agricultural land back up in there that are set back far enough from the proposed homes that we're gonna plant some more trees back in there as additional buffer to the properties to the north, as well as some, some trees along the property line to the south, again, in open, in open areas. So there's a total of 66, 76 new trees being planted on the site. So we'll have a total of 327 trees on the eight-acre parcel when we're done. So that's better than, an average of better than 40 trees per acre remaining after the, after the subdivision is, is built out. So I just kind of wanted to go through those numbers for you. I will update this in the next several days, and we'll get that back to the town and as well as for distribution to the tree commission. I have the spreadsheet all worked out. I did that this afternoon, so I will get that to them as well, so they can see the sizes of the trees that are coming out. There are a number of black walnuts on the tree, on the property in the 30- to 40-inch diameter range. We're protecting a number of those. There come some- There come some huge catalpa trees, which aren't that common, but these are, there's one that's forty-four inches in diameter. Um, and that's also on the preserved list. I think there are eighteen trees greater than thirty inches in diameter that we're able to save as part of this, uh... So, over the last, course of the last year or so, Joe's been able to move some of the, the houses around, move some of the, uh, rain gardens, et cetera, around to save some of these larger trees. And some of those are on the existing lane that leads down to Stony Street, which we're abandoning. We won't be using that anymore, but some of those larger trees down there, we'll also, we'll be able to save those as well. I think that's all you need from me at this time.
I will wait for the updated, you know, we'll look forward to the updated information and the response from our commission on that. Any comments so far? What else?
I'm, I'm good then. So, um, you wanna wait for that to schedule a public hearing, I guess?
I think so. What do you think?
Well, we have to reengage our... Environmental consultant. Our consultant as well.
Okay.
To review, 'cause the tree mitigation plan has changed and I think that the wetland mitigation was now fleshed out a little bit more in, in more detail. So there, there's, that has to take place as well.
Okay.
Alright, we're good.
Go on that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last one, right?
No, we got Guiding Eyes.
Guiding Eyes. I mean, no, this, coming up is the last topic. Guiding Eyes for the Blind, number fourteen on the agenda. Discussion on a site plan and special permit located at thirty-two forty-one Crumpon Road. With Guiding Eyes Training Facility Kennel and Hospital. Good evening.
Good evening. Jody Cross from Zarin and Steinmetz, uh, filling in for David Steinmetz, who is on vacation.
Good for him.
Again.
Lawyers do.
I get to go next week, so it's fair. So here on behalf of Guiding...
Do you think he's a doctor or something?
I know, right? He's in a different country, I think he's going to Vienna today.
Oh.
Um, I'm here on behalf of Guiding Eyes for the Blind, uh, in connection with their application for a new canine health and wellness center, as you said, at thirty-two forty-one Crumpon Road. I'm here with representatives from Guiding Eyes, Tom, Thomas Panic, John Donnelly, Bill Ma, and I didn't catch the most important member's name.
Mr. Blaze.
Mr. Blaze. Uh, also have Jo Renna, I have, from Site Design Consultants, Tony Russo, Abigail Adams from, uh, A2 Land Consulting, and Paul Gladish from BDA Architecture, and I apologize if I mispronounced the last name. Perfect. This application was last before you, back in February, I believe. And since then, there were some significant changes to the, uh, design. Uh, that's why you haven't seen us in a while, so we're back to discuss that. The, uh, application was before the Conservation Commission, as well as the A.R.B., earlier this month. So, really, we're here tonight to, uh, discuss the, the new iteration of the plans, as well as to request to be placed on the September eleventh agenda for a public hearing. So we hope we'll be able to accomplish that tonight. Um, and with that, since it's been a pretty long agenda, I'm just gonna kick it over to John Donnelly, who's going to give some introductory remarks, and then he'll give it over to Joe for, uh, some of the technical discussion.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, chair the board for, uh, Guiding Eyes for the Blind. I've been a volunteer for the organization for about twenty years. And I'll be incredibly brief, but I just really wanted to thank the board again for allowing us to go forward with the purchase of the land. It's incredibly important project for us. It's gonna enable us to serve more visually blind and impaired people than we're capable of today. Uh, I think, as we mentioned before, our current facility is over sixty years old and we'll be moving a lot of people, a lot of dogs, and a lot of cars out of the residential area to this new site. So I just wanted to really thank the board for your time and for your cooperation with us. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, with our last presentation to you, since then, um, we have updated the site plan to include some trees that, um, we, we had not had surveyed or identified within our limited disturbance, 'cause that changed slight, slightly. So basically, in the area, um, this area up in here and down, in this area down in here, we've, um, added some more trees. And Tony Russo will speak to that and tell you where we stand as far as tree removal and, uh, and mitigation for the, um, removal of the trees. To this, to this point in time, we've submitted, uh, complete applications, uh, site plan applications. As you know, we had a text amendment done, uh, to this, uh, section of the code for this zone to accommodate this facility. Uh, we've submitted a long environmental assessment form. You have, uh, environmental reports regarding the landfill area, the construct, C and D landfill area, uh, the trees, the wetlands. A complete set of site, engineered site plans, architectural drawings, landscape plans, lighting plans. So you have a pretty complete package, um, to, 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 moving forward at this point. Since, uh, since that, our last meeting, uh, the client has retained a, uh, acoustical engineering firm, Sarami, and, um, they have prepared a study and a report. We've received a draft of that today, which we are going to get in, dig into and, and, and look at it in-house. And then we'll be, be providing you with that information. But preliminarily, um, um, they're suggesting some sound mitigation, which would include some, uh, sound barrier fencing. Not, not just a plastic vinyl fence, but acoustical material fence, um, along these, uh, kennel, uh, outdoor areas along the southern edge here. So that would buffer any sound, uh, that the neighbor might get to the south. There's two neighbors that are within about a two-hundred feet of that fence line. So we'll be providing you further information on that. We were hoping to have it prepared and have him here tonight, but that just didn't, that just didn't manifest itself. So I just want you to know that we've been proactive about that. We're gonna have that information for you, um, at, at the next meeting. And we'll have that person attend, so you can ask, you know, ask any questions directly. Otherwise, this is the same plan you've seen the last couple of times around. Um, at this point, I'm gonna ask Tony Russo to come up and just quickly go over, um, the updates to the tree mitigation and the, uh, tree survey. And if you have any questions for him, you can answer any questions regarding that, or the, or the landfill, or, or, or whatever.
Good evening, Tony Russo of Environmental Compliance Services. We received the, uh, Yorktown Tree Conservation Advisory Commission's memo this, this afternoon and, um, I guess we can build on that, uh, as noted...
What's the date of the memo you received?
Uh, August fourteenth, that's today.
That should be in your late breaking.
That's in the late breaking.
Have you... Have, has the board received it, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
I got it in here.
Okay.
As noted, uh, Guiding Eyes for the Blind is seeking the board's consideration to forego mitigation for trees removed for the purpose of constructing a landfill cap in the access road, uh, to offset the potentials for, uh, surface and groundwater contamination to off-site, uh, water resources. Back in oh-nine, uh, the state received a complaint from the city of New York that this site may pose a threat to their water supply, the Croton Reservoir. Since then, the state has moved this site, uh, within their landfill initiative to investigate such sites to see if there's any threats, as mentioned. And so, since then, they actually put in, uh, some groundwater monitoring wells and came up with, uh, some metals and some organics. Uh, nothing of major concern, but the concern still stands for whether or not, in the future, this could pose a, a significant threat. Um, in light of Guiding Eyes' interest in the property, uh, we were retained to complete an investigation. We did, we summarized our, our work and submitted everything to the state and the state requested that we go ahead with a cap, a soil cap, to prevent any infiltration through the waste mass that we identified. The landfill was three and a half acres, it was brought down to one acre after our investigation. We talked a little bit about that last time. And so, the remedy, the ideal remedy would be to put in, uh, a soil cap, twenty-four inches in thickness, and it would be maintained by Guiding Eyes for the Blind over time. Uh, and is their, it's their project. And, uh, they will maintain it, uh, for the purpose of offsetting any infiltration potentials. And so, as noted in the, uh, the commission's, um, memo of today, uh, we're seeking to, uh, forego, uh, claiming, you know, uh, counting the one hundred and sixty-eight trees for the removal, uh, for removal for the, uh, construction of the cap and the access road. The access road was constructed, uh, as part of the recent design to kind of jog in such a way that it would avoid the most practically, you know, speaking, trees. So we minimize the number of trees removed in that respect. And so, since, um, our last meeting, uh, we, as Joe mentioned, we had some additional survey work out there, some additional counts. And we, we came up with a total of two hundred and forty trees that would be removed. There were some specimen trees that would remain, thirteen. And so, in light of that, we generated a handful of, uh, mitigation concepts, including development of onsite conservation easement to protect and preserve the remaining stands and trees out on the site. Removing existing invasive, uh, species, trees, shrubs, and especially the Asiatic bittersweet vine. Uh, we also would implement best management practices. There's a handful that we would put together and implement, sort of a tree protection plan, that would be implemented to protect trees while construction takes place. And as in the past, we've mentioned that Guiding Eyes for the Blind is interested in funding any forest restoration projects that are sponsored by the town and anything related to open space, uh, and parks and recreation. And also, our mitigation plan, wetland mitigation plan, and also the, um, excuse me, the, uh, landscape, uh, plan that Abigail will speak to in a few minutes, generates a total of five hundred and thirty-five trees and shrubs. And of that, a hundred and sixty-eight, uh, trees and the rest are shrubs. So, I'm not standing here to say that's gonna do it all. I'm just saying that's just part of the mitigation measures that we're looking to implement. Any questions?
I'm not sure how to interpret this.
Yeah, regarding this memo that is dated August twelfth, I guess I'd like to, to, I don't know if you had a chance to digest this.
Yes.
Uh, well, my question is, uh, I mean, they're making statements about, um... They're talking about the, the D E.C. mandate that, that in order to develop the rest of the site, they're talking about the area that's gonna be capped.
Correct.
Capping that cap area, if you refer to it that way.
Right.
Is a requirement that you're being...
Correct.
Made to comply with.
That's correct.
They're considering it to be part of the development area, which...
Right, I, I...
I don't know that I consider that...
What's in their mind on that, but we're just looking at it as what it is. And it...
Right.
It's something that, uh, pre-existed and, um...
Right.
It was investigated and, and that's how to handle it, unfortunately, that's the remedy.
And if you weren't here, that would remain the...
It remained.
In condition that it is...
Absolutely.
We don't know how long.
Right.
Okay, so I, I don't understand that comment. But the other thing is, they're, they're making reference to, um... The proposal, I guess, is totally an error of chapter two-seventy-dash-ten mitigation.
It could mean that...
I can't speak to that, 'cause I'm...
Right, I guess, uh, you're still looking at it, you know, they're looking at the numbers. And they're looking to have as much, uh, you know, replaced in accordance with the regs, is, is what I'm...
Well, it says totally an error, I don't...
I...
Maybe you can enlighten me as to why somebody would say that?
Yeah, that, I, I don't know. Uh, let me just see, I'll take a look, but I, I looked at it before and it just didn't spark. You know, I, I'm not...
So can we just say that you'll get back to us on your response to this whole...
Absolutely, yeah. But, go on, please.
No, tho, those basically, I mean...
Okay.
I'm looking at that and they recite the numbers and so forth. I, I can't speak to it, 'cause I haven't digested the numbers myself. But this, to me, I disagree with their comment regarding the, the area to be capped, because it's, you're being made to, to respond to that.
Right, exactly.
And I don't consider that to be a development area. It's, it's an area of mitigation for...
Something else.
Yeah, for, it's on the site that you inherited.
Yeah, it's a necessary remedy and it's a, it's a very important remedy.
Right.
It's, it's common sense.
Did, did you inventory, there's a hundred and sixty-eight trees that are involved in that cap area?
Yes, I would think, I would think that, uh, we may be able to save a few trees out there, maybe up, upwards of fifteen to twenty.
You invent, inventoried those, so we know what they are?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Can, can you just speak, just for clarification on their memo? There's a comment that, uh, the plantings, including the schedule, include species that are non-native to our region, non-native to New York, and non-native to our continent.
Right.
Can you speak to that? I don't wanna...
Abigail will take care of that, yes.
I gotta hear this.
Before we get to that, I, I have, there was one other comment I picked up on from the tree commission, I think in the earlier memo, where they talked about, and this may be for Joe more so than, than you. Relocating the access drive a little bit, one way or the other. Did you, did you see that?
Yeah, we, uh, we did look at that.
Yeah.
So it's a trade-off of impacting wet, more wetland, 'cause we're basically crossing at the narrowest part of the, the wetland there. So it's either impacting more wetland, that's one part of it. But the other part of it is, we looked at this, um, there's one species tree that we can't save by where it is. But the other ones, or the more significant ones, um, we can create a, um, um, a collar wall or something to, a tree well or whatnot to protect, to, 'cause they're right, it's right, they're right on the edge of our, the toe of our fill. So, I, I don't see the benefit, to be honest with you. It's not, it, it, it doesn't make any sense.
I, I just, I, I wanted, you know, some res...
Yep.
See what your answer was on that. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, I get it.
I just wanted to make a note that, um, looking at this total error implication, I think what they're saying is, if, with, maybe they're, they're looking at as, that's what we're trying to sell here. Those five hundred and thirty-five species, one hundred and sixty-eight trees and the rest shrubs, and we should walk away. That's not what we're saying. So, I think it, it might be a little emotional on, I'm not sure. You, you can question them on that, I'm not really sure. But, uh, clearly, we're, we're not there yet. We're not, we're not proposing one-for-one. Uh, we, we're looking to, you know, in lieu of, you know, funding...
They're also talking about the native as opposed to non-native.
Yeah, that's something, right.
So I read that paragraph.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need any kind of an opinion to support their interpretation as to what the impact of the cap is versus developing the rest of the site? Or are we pretty clear on the answer to that?
I, I think, I happen to think we should look at the hundred and sixty-eight trees and evaluate what they are. Their size and so on and so forth, and then make your determination on that. I, I, I follow the logic.
Right.
Unfortunately, I don't think that you'll find in the regulation that it gives you that out, and I think that's what they're referring to. So in order to move forward, I think you have to have a little bit of a deeper dive in it. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one other thing before you go, Tony.
Sure.
Two other things. So, you submitted us, to us, a complete tree mitigation plan so far, or no? It's not complete?
It's, it's, it's not complete.
Okay.
Uh, as the commission mentioned, they're, they're looking to get into the ratios and so...
Okay.
They brought up the native species and so on and so forth.
Got it. Uh, and where are we with the wetland mitigation plan? Is that solid?
Conceptual was reviewed with the Conservation Board... Conceptual was reviewed with the Conservation Board and that will, the report itself will be submitted probably the end of this week.
The end of this week, okay.
Yes.
And next week, what's today, fourteen?
Next week, on the twenty-third, yes.
Okay, so we'll have the wetland mitigation report in your, in your good form for them to have in hand.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, it goes, it would be great to have them out there to talk about that, so.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Let's talk about those foreign species there.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Abigail Adams, registered landscape architect, owner of A2 Land Consulting, out of New Fairfield, Connecticut. So, I'm just going to briefly go through the, the landscape planting plan of the site. So, first, as you enter the site from the east, we are just proposing a simple row of button bush along the outside face of the walls as you come in the access drive. Once you're inside the site, for the main entry of the building, we have a very heavily planted landscape island and a front entryway, as you can see there on the enlargement plan, thanks, Joe. The material in these areas is both evergreen and deciduous shrubs, we also have a lot of perennials and some flowering dogwoods, as well as columnar birches in this area. Plants also include inkberry, viburnums, hosta, daylilies, rhodos, et cetera, in this area. As we move around the entire site, we have street trees and canopy trees planted around all of the end islands, these include sugar maples, the green mountain sugar maples, as well as nisa salvatica, which is the sour gum, both native, both native trees there. The slopes outside of the fencing will be seeded with a proposed roadside matrix mix. This has both shrub, grasses and wildflower seeds in it, so that it eventually grows up, will have succession plantings and growth. It is meant to be unmaintained so that it can really stabilize these slopes as well as become a source of habitat and food source for wildlife on those outer slopes. And then eventually, trees will grow up in those areas as well, it's just a great way for succession planting to happen along there. On the south side, we are proposing seventy-two evergreen trees to be planted along the woodline there. This is both for visual buffer and to help provide some sound attenuation over in this area, so that's where you can see that, we've got a mix of different evergreens here, we have the American holly, eastern red cedar, we do have some green giant arborvitae mostly because those grow really, really fast and they get nice and dense, it's a, really a good tree to have to help with the visual buffer as well as that sound attenuation, and then also some white fir proposed in there. In terms of the planting, we did receive a memo, probably a few weeks ago, from the New York State DEC, I think it wa, DEP, thank you, and they asked us, they went through the plant schedule and they asked us to replace two or three of the shrubs that they weren't too keen on, so we did that, we replaced those and those are in the updated plans. Our plan definitely is not one hundred percent native, we do have a large amount of native trees, again, the maples, the, the dogwoods, the hollies, the cedars, inkberry, honeysuckle, there's a large amount of natives in there, but as with most planting plans, on occasion, we like to throw in some ornamentals that they probably didn't like the fact that I have Russian cypress in there, again, it's a really great grounds cover to have in a commercial site for snow plowing, it's, it's low to the ground, it does really well.
Where's that, where's that?
We have.
On the site?
On the site, we have those in some of the end islands surrounding the trees.
They're essentially in the built.
In the bu, yes.
In the built.
Absolutely.
Area of the site.
All of these are within the fenced area of the property.
Thank you.
Yes, you know, a couple of other ones that just are jumping out at me are stillby, it's, it's a perennial, we have twenty of those, again, it's, it's an ornamental, it's Asian descent, so to speak, and then some of the daylilies and hostas aren't necessarily native plant material.
What about trees?
They're ornamental. The trees that we have were proposed, the green mountain sugar maple, the dakota pinnacle, white birch and the sour gum, regionally native.
What about, do you have trees that are non-native?
Uh, let's see, I would have to check on the white fir, the American holly is native, the eastern red cedar is native, green giant arborvitae is not, it's western, it's a, it's a western arborvitae. So, the majority of the trees are native.
Hmm?
Popular.
Very popular.
Yeah.
For good reason, too, they're, they're, in my opinion, they're, they're a great tree, but.
And they're benign to other plants, other native plants around it.
Right.
They're not going to choke a bunch of stuff out, right?
Exactly, correct. But, but we're willing to look at that if we want to talk about some of the shrubs and ornamental stuff, but again, we're keeping those around the building, the main entrances, the walkways and some of the islands. I think that's all I have for the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna have Paul Gladys come up, he's the BDA Architect, and he's gonna go through the, some of the renderings and answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, right, Paul Gladys, BDA Architecture, I have a couple of blogs.
Thank you.
I'll just put these out here.
Boy, I'm telling you, what computer can do today, huh?
So, I'm here to talk about the building, not the site at all. Architecturally, we've had a bit of a change in terms of the overall configuration, we've been talking with staff and the way that they manage the animals and work with the animals, and we've reconfigured the overall layout of the plan in order to accommodate a more efficient layout for them. Architecturally, it still keeps the same flavor as you've seen the last time, so it's context sensitive, I know, thank you. You could just put this one up. So, we have a sample board with the colors and the materials that are primary, it's, it's going to be a sided building primarily and shegel roof. We kind of consider this a little bit of a contemporary colonial, right, and so it's got a lot of very contemporary details and a very traditional shape and color set. As far as the configuration of the building.
They do the computers, huh?
No.
Just amazing.
Late modern cars and everything.
I used to draw this by hand in school.
Really?
Absolutely.
Down one of the corners of one of the.
You're rendering anymore, perspectives.
I'm just impressed with the quality of the computer work nowadays.
Jesus, yeah.
Do, do they still teach rendering and perspective in the School of Architecture anymore? Because I spend days doing these things.
And it's so fast, right? Yeah, I know, exactly.
Days and weeks.
So, you can see some of those aerial photographs, you'll notice that there's, there's a core building and then there are these pods that go around the building, right? And so, the core building houses things like the health center, there's an assessment area where, it's a large room, basically where they assess dogs to find out if they're compatible to being a service animal or not, there's office spaces, support things like food prep and laundry and, you know, the mechanicals, the second floor is entirely some office spaces. The, the pods, that's where the real work happens and that's where the animals arrive. And let me address a couple of things that I know are going to be questions, right? So, in our world, our firm, we specialize in animal care, we've been doing this for about thirty years, we've got over a thousand projects, projects in forty-six states and fifteen countries, that's all we do, is animal care facilities, and we're trying to bring all of that to this facility, we're very excited about this because it kind of pushes the envelope and the state of the art. The, the pods are set up to address acoustics, odor control and pathogen control, those are the big things that we need to worry about, acoustics internal to the building and external to the building. Every project that we do has animals in it, everybody, every neighbor wants to know how loud is it going to be, right? And so, when you're talking about acoustics, there's three things basically you can do, containment, absorption and separation. The building is going to be structured such that we're going to compartmentalize the number of animals that are to be in one space, right? And so, these pods are broken up such that we never have more than twenty dogs in any one part of the building. There's a lot of dogs in this building, it's going to be two hundred and twenty, I think, in total, max capacity, and that can get pretty loud, if you try to put two hundred and twenty dogs in one room, it's going to be, you know, crazy loud. So, by compartmentalizing, we are able to minimize that possibility, right? One dog gets going and he sets off the other dogs and that kind of thing, so we separate them for that reason, partially, and also for pathogen control, right? There is things like canine respiratory diseases, kennel cough and things like that, that are highly contagious, and these are large, high dollar animals, these are very valuable animals, it's about thirty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars to train one of these dogs, so we want to take care of them. So, by compartmentalizing it and separate airflow, we can separate any kind of pathogen that might be present in one of the pods and we can get that animal into, into an isolation very quickly. Also, acoustically, we're containing, the, the pods are made of a concrete block even though they're sided on the outside, for, again, containment of the sound, and within the pods, there's going to be enough acoustical material for absorption, right? And so, we can keep the sound levels down, right? There's going to be sophisticated cleaning systems, so odor control, you know, there's always the question of, you know, dogs are smelly and, you know, how do you keep after them, it's a lot of animals, so we make it easy for staff to do that, right? And so, the cleaning systems, we spent a lot of time on washing and drainage and waste disposal and things like that, so that's going to be addressed as well. So, we're very excited about the project, you know, this is one of the best you're going to find in the world of this type of facility, so we're, we're very pleased to be able to be part of the team and if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer those.
I, I just have a detailed question that's shown on one of your renderings.
Sure.
It's to the left of the main entrance, and it's, you have a chain link fence, I believe, that goes, it's, this is on one of the.
Sure, yeah.
The peninsulas into the parking area.
Right, yeah.
And there's a chain link fence that goes right across the sidewalk.
Yeah.
What is the reason for that?
Yeah, that's kind of an anomaly of that really fast computer thing.
Okay.
They don't think about all the details. Fencing, there's a couple different types of fencing.
Did you smell that?
So, each one of the pods has got its own yard, and all of the yards that face towards the south are going to have acoustic fencing to accommodate the, the noise absorption on that side. So, that's the first, when we're talking about safety of these animals and containment of these animals, we want multiple levels of safety, right? And so, every area where the animals are supposed to be off-leash is fenced, but even beyond that, there's another fence that goes around the entire perimeter of the site, and there are two vehicular gates, and what you're seeing is one end of where the gate is going to be.
Okay.
Right, and so, while you can drive all the way around, there's going to be a gate, it would be automatic operators on the gates to open and allow the staff to go around to the backside. Training doesn't happen on this site.
So, are, are you saying there's going to be more fencing and gates than, than is shown, or it's just not shown accurately? I'm not quite sure what.
The renderings don't really show that level of detail, if you look at some of the aerials, you can see there's a chain link fence around the perimeter.
Yeah.
So, all the way around this, and then here and here.
See here, it goes up.
Are going to be gates.
So, I'm sorry, I.
So, here.
Right.
And here are going to be gates.
Ah, okay, so I can.
So, this is public parking.
So, so this, this fence here and fence here, there's going to be a, a gate that closes that.
Right, exactly right.
I got you, okay.
Yes.
So, I couldn't, I couldn't understand why it would be there.
Yeah, so we're still working out the details, you know, on the, on the site as far as the materials, what we're looking for as far as gates is going to be a wrought iron look, it's an aluminum type of fence primarily, except for those yards that are facing towards the south, again, with the solid acoustic material. And at the entrance, we're going to do some, on the front facade, we're going to do a half-height wall and then put a shorter fence on top of that, just as an architectural enhancement on that side of the facade.
Above, above one of the entry areas with, that's in blue, is there going to be some kind of a exterior mural or something?
Yeah, it's, we're still working through the specifics of it, but, you know, that's showing kind of a silhouette of a dog, you know, is kind of an idea of the flavor, it could be something more literal, like a mural, but we're still kind of working through what those would be.
But it's just an aesthetic design feature?
Yes, absolutely, yes, right. This is a big building, right? I mean, and we're trying to make a big building look not like a big building, right? And so, we're breaking it up in the massing and it kind of looks like village, you know, almost even though it's one contiguous with structure, right? And so, it's the height, it's the shape, it's the color, it's the finishes that break that down.
That recessed entry gives you that feeling.
Yeah, that was part of it, and we're going to bring, the entry element is still a work in progress, the Architectural Review Board had some questions about how we are doing that, and so we're going to give them a couple of options, but yeah, that, it's all part of that, that overall scheme.
This facility is just dogs and staff, not residents like you have.
Correct, yes, that's right, yeah, no, no clients, no students on the site at all. This is really animal housing and wellness, right? And that's what it's for, training is done off-site, part of the configuration of this is to allow the trainers to get the dogs into the vans with the fewest amount of steps because they go twice a day, and taking two hundred dogs in and out twice a day, that's a lot of movement, right? And so, it needs to be very efficient, and that was part of the reason for the reconfiguration.
I just have one.
Yeah.
Question, back to the acoustical design.
Yes.
Of the, the pods.
Mm-hmm.
Will you, are you, is the design targeted to a transmission rating of some sort, the assemblies and so forth?
If we're talking about between, interior walls between, an STC of fifty-five, and with the, the block walls on the outside, we should get pretty close to that, there's windows and there's doors, and really, when you're talking about acoustic containment, the, the weak link is the openings, right? And so, steel doors, solid core, insulated doors, weather strip, not just for weather but also for sound, you know, double pane and sometimes triple pane depending on the facade, windows to absorb more of that sound. I think we'll get an STC of about forty, if you combine all those elements of the pod as far as the exterior walls.
Of the exterior walls?
Yes, right, and then the acoustic fencing should have an STC of thirty-five, right? So, that's another layer, and then we have the distance of several hundred feet before you get to the house, we talked about the landscaping, there's also in the, it would be this west corner.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a grade change across here.
Right.
And so, it, basically, the site is flat but the ground is high, right? And so, there's a, it's not really a berm, it's just kind of dug into the ground, but that's the second level of mitigation, as you go towards the, the west, that kind of passes, right, I mean, it drops down, but we're going to address the acoustics on that side because, you know, it's a sensitive thing and it's.
Will the, your sound engineer address the design of the walls of the pods as well?
I think they are treating the exterior, that their, their commission, I think, right now is the exterior, yes, and so they'll be doing their calculations based on what we tell them the building is made out of, plus whatever their fencing recommendations are going to be.
So, will they?
So, the goal is not to be higher than ambient sound, ever, right? So, the sound pressure level target is to be at ambient level and no higher.
Yeah, what I'm concerned with is the pods.
Mm-hmm.
In the evening.
In the evening?
In the evening.
Yes.
Okay, so, if they're, if the barking gets going.
Yeah.
From the interior, that's where you may impact the neighbors, so.
Right, right, exactly.
That should be, I think, looked at with some.
Right.
You know, focus.
And.
There's only so much you can do from the outside with the open, you know.
Sure.
From beyond the fence.
Sure.
You're going to hear it, you might not hear it so above the ambient.
You're, you're absolutely right, but also.
And the more you have, the more you're going to hear it.
That's absolutely true.
You're doing knowledge before.
It's absolutely true, and if this was a shelter, we'd be having a whole different conversation because a shelter has uncontrolled types of animals. Here, they're breeding animals for temperament and intelligence, very well-behaved dogs. I see all the time.
Right. Well, I, I'll tell you that a number of years ago, at the Granite Springs site, there Well, I, I'll tell you that a number of years ago, at the Granite Springs site, there was a, a big project.
Yeah.
And one of the major issues among, along with drainage, was the sound.
Yes.
And the existing kennel was not doing such a good job.
Mm-hmm.
When they built the new one and soundproofed the sec- the, the original one, all of the concerns went away. So, we should be designing to that level.
Yes, right. And, and that's why several levels of sound management, it starts interior to the pods itself. We want to absorb as much of the sound as we can within the pod.
Yes.
Because that's less sound pressure that comes through the walls.
Paul, if I may?
Yes.
I don't know if I need a mic or if I can just-
Um, I can't bring you the mic.
They can hear you.
They can hear me, okay, yeah. Yeah, just, just to say that one of the reasons why we did the departure from the original design, speaking with Paul and Joe and the team, was that exact consideration. We originally were thinking an interior-exterior design, if you saw, and we moved from an interior-interior design to be able to mitigate that sound. It's really important to us to understand and important stuff.
Yeah.
I apologize for not having the sound design finished by today's meeting. We were hoping to have, we'll continue to work on it. We did the ambient sound measurement by decibel level there, and, you know, you have our commitment to continue to, to focus on and to understand how important it is.
Do you know the distance from the perimeter fence to the nearest residence? I guess it would be on Carpenter Road or?
Yeah, so the distance from our outermost fence of the yard area, the kennel yard area, the pod yard area, to the residence is just slightly over two hundred feet. To the face of the building, beyond the yard area, is two hundred twenty-five feet.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all we have. And we're going back to Abaca at their September fifth meeting.
Okay. I just have, I don't know if this was addressed by you before, Joe, but in February, the fire commissioner, Board of Fire Prevention sent the memo in, and one of the things they were talking about was emergency access. The adequacy of the single-axis road at the width which you have proposed. Did you-
Yes, we winded it to twenty feet.
Twenty or twenty?
To twenty feet.
Okay.
Yeah. And we extended a fire hydrant in from Mohansick up to the corner of the building.
He said twenty-six feet, if there was just one axis. Is that... Am I reading that wrong or you're just saying twenty is where you're gonna be?
Oh, you mean the main axis?
The main axis.
Oh, okay.
Not the back.
Oh, yeah, no, no. Okay, okay, we're good. We're good there, yes.
Twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the main, just the main axis road. What'd you get into this?
That's what they're talking about.
Right, okay.
Okay.
I thought you meant around the site.
No, not the one going around.
We made that twenty feet.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions now? We had the public information on this and I believe we were planning a public hearing in September on the eleventh. Are we ready and able to do that?
We'll need the final things that we talked about, the tree mitigation to be finalized. Not, it doesn't need to be completely, but I need a good, you know, amount of stuff so we understand what we can do. And the wetland mitigation, which you said you'll have. So with those, I think you'll have everything that you need. Anything that needs to be submitted needs to be done by the twenty-fifth, that's all.
Okay, so we're good for a public hearing on the eleventh? Now, I think that's it, right? Anything else, gentlemen? Motion to adjourn?
We're on overtime.
Usual.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Good night.
Thank you, good night all.